Uh, I'm one of them, that's the guy who...
Thank you.
You're betweening our stuff?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Get the bullets.
Where's Jacob?
She's on the right side, I don't know if that means...
He's pretty much gone.
Let me kind of stand up, can you see her? This is... Oh shit, it's okay. I tried to send a email, but it wasn't there. This is here, down the aisle right now?
Next one?
Yes. Is that right?
Say hi.
I'm doing very well here. Sorry, I was sorry. The website right there.
Everybody here. I hope that we take it on hands and our hands. It's the best we could do tonight. Thanks to the school for helping us out. And also thanks to the school and everyone that's been a part of making this facility available for us through administration. Thank you for making the call, we appreciate that.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
How about now? Okay. Alright, I'll repeat that. We want to thank everyone that's involved in the schools and making this facility available for us tonight. Administration, teachers, maintenance, we appreciate that. I will now re-convene the June 6th, 27th regularly scheduled meeting, albeit at this point would be possible. Due to the extraordinary number of citizens and attendants for budget public hearing at yesterday's meeting, and because the fire marshal told us we would have to limit that capacity to those who could kind of see, and there were still several out in cars and several standing at the back, we re-convened the meeting today at this location. And now I want to thank Dr. Remsey for his assistance last night in making sure that this building was available and that there would be no conflict with our using it. And we express our appreciation for that. This is the first time any of us in the board have had to recess a meeting because of overcrowding. So, up until this point, we've had plenty of seats over there, but we do invite all of you to come to any of our meetings and welcome them to come. And tonight, we want as many of our citizens as possible to have the opportunity to be heard. So what I would ask the board to consider a motion to extend the length of the hearing as necessary on two hours originally allotted. Now, a motion by Commissioner Gregory Second, by Commissioner Reed and all, and Kay Brown, by Al Thesen, motion carries five zero, thank you for it. Alright, I thank you for that applause, and now I have to set a few rules if you would say. I want to ask that you reserve the end of this time your applause if we applaud after every speaker. We've got sixty-four speakers, I know. That will cause us to spend a lot of unnecessary time, so. But I welcome your applause at the end of the last speaker. I understand there's some students that are some school staff that would like to stand when a certain speaker speaks on their behalf. So you're welcome to stand, and may stand at your seat if you would like to have a look at. At this time, I'll ask our county manager to make a few remarks regarding the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget. And then I'll open the cover here and move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to make a few comments about the budget and just review in summary some information regarding the fiscal year 2018 budget. I'd like to begin and just say that I am a natural birth. I can't sing, and I can't act, and I can't dance. This is supposed to be the most time I ever get to stand on stage. But we do appreciate everybody being here. The budget process is always a challenge. This year was no different. In fact, it probably presented more challenges than the previous four budgets that I had the privilege and pleasure of presenting. So what I'll be talking about will be displayed on the screen to the board members left and the audiences right. The entire fourth term fiscal year 2018 budget consists of twelve funds. There's ten primary funds that we look at each year. And the total budget, including all of the funds, is a hundred and thirty-six million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That is the bottom number under gross budget. The major fund in the budget is the general fund. It is supported by the general fund tax rate, which is forty-six and a half cents for one hundred dollars. And the gross budget there is ninety-two million, seven twenty-seven, five seventeen. I just want to mention a couple of other funds quickly. The Fund Two Hundred, which is the public safety and emergency management fund. That is supported by our advanced life support tax rate, which is currently three cents for one hundred dollars. That is your EMS, public safety responders. That budget is six million, eight hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. And then, also want to mention the Fund Two Fifteen, which is the fourth one down on the screen. That is the rural fire protection service district rate. So anyone not living in municipality would pay this particular tax and the rate that goes with it. And that rate is nine cent for one hundred dollars, opposed to nine cent for one hundred dollars. That is a half cent increase over the current fiscal year, and that budget is set at four million, two ninety-three, eight sixteen. And just on the general fund tax rate again, that tax rate does apply to all properties. Real property, personal property, business personal property, motor vehicles. It applies to all properties whether they're in the unincorporated area of the county or in the municipality. And the advanced life support rate applies to all properties as well. This is information on the various tax rates. So the board has the discretion of setting the general fund tax rate, the advanced life support tax rate, and the fire service district rate each year in the budget process. This slide gives us history back fiscal year twelve. But again, the county general fund rate is forty-six and a half cents. The ALS rate is three cents, and the fire district rate is nine cents. A penny on the tax rate generates a million, one hundred and ninety dollars, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That takes into account the two percent discount that is offered for early payment of property taxes. Takes into account penalties and interest for late payments as well. For the fire service district rate, that rate, because it doesn't apply to all properties in the county, a penny on the fire service district rate generates four hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Because the general fund is the primary fund, it makes up the majority of the entire budget. It makes up about seventy percent of the entire budget. I spent just a brief period of time talking about that particular fund. What you see on the screen are the activities and agencies that are funded through the property tax rate and the general fund revenues. The ninety-two million dollars supports education, human services, public safety, general government. It includes debt service, cultural and any transfers in and out or to other agencies. The general fund, in and of itself, covers twenty-three departments. It also funds more county schools. Funds go to Sanos Community College, and again, the debt service, and it does fund some grant match, some opportunities that the county has for receiving grant funding that they apply to local match. You can see the percentages that consist of each area, or each area consists of. Education does account for the greatest percentage of the general fund budget, at almost forty-four percent. That's both More County Schools, Sanos Community College, and including the debt service related to school debt. This is pretty much the same information, just in a little different format. It mentions a little more detail about the twenty-three departments within the general fund operations. And these are services and operations that, as I said in the original budget presentation, the budget boils down to lots of roads and problems and numbers. Talk about rates and revenue and extended years, but it's really more than that. The budget funds many, many operations and agencies and activities. And throughout the fiscal year, each of these activities, I'm sure, impact every citizen in More County and many citizens that don't live in More County throughout their daily life, probably each and every day. And, you know, it's a struggle to balance all of these agencies. There's funding requests, or many of them increases each year. And so we, me along with the budget team and many other people who help us put the budget together, department directors and agency leaders, we worked for many weeks and many meetings trying to establish the priorities and budget and funds, those priorities within the revenue structure that we can generate. And because in the general fund, education makes up about forty-four percent of it. I'll spend this amount on the More County Schools funding and Sanos Community College funding. The very bottom row above the bold numbers here is the projected or recommended fiscal year 2018 funding for More County Schools. The student enrollment projection from Department of Public Instruction is twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety-six. That number was provided for budget planning purposes. The current expense allocation is twenty-nine million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is an increase compared to the current fiscal year 2017 of two million, three sixty-one, eight thirty-seven. And it's about an eight point seven percent increase over the current fiscal year. There's an allocation to capital outlay of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and an allocation to digital learning of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The total of those three categories is thirty million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is an increase over the current fiscal year of two million, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And at last night's board meeting, the board back in late fall last year had approved a funding formula for More County Schools and incorporated that into the More County budget development policy. That funding formula established the funding for current expense, capital outlay, digital learning, and forty percent of the budget is property sales tax. The thirty million, five ninety-one is forty-one point nine percent. So at last night's meeting, we asked the board to delay the implementation of the funding formula so we can incorporate the thirty million dollars into the budget and not be outside of our budget ordinance. The board did approve that resolution delaying implementation for one year. Debt service related to More County Schools is projected to be four million, thirty-one thousand dollars. And the total funding, including current expense, capital outlay, and digital learning, and debt service, be thirty-four million, six twenty-two, four sixty-three. Regarding Sanos Community College, their current expense outlay is projected to be four million, three eighty-seven, twenty-two, which is a hundred and one thousand, two ninety-five increase over the current fiscal year. Debt service for Sanos Community College, a million, one fifty-nine, thirty-nine. And there's an allocation to their capital reserve, which is related to their declining annual debt service, of five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. The total funding for fiscal year eighteen for Sanos is six million, one thirty-five, sixty-seven. Those are some highlights regarding the county budget primarily focused on the general fund operational budget. And at this time, Madam Chair, recommend that we open the cover here.
Thank you, Mr. James. At this time, I will open the cover here and before we begin, this remark is probably not necessary. I don't think anybody needs it, I guess. Let's only respect each other, we have children here, and this is our time to show them how to hold that cover here, and we respect for every speaker, irregardless of whether you agree with their opinion or not. So, just wanted to set that out, and we're ready to begin, Madam Board.
Okay, each speaker is allowed to determine three minutes. You are allowed to fill your time to each speaker, to give them a total of six minutes. But if you do that, please still come forward and clearly state your name for the record and that you are yielding your time, and to whom you are yielding your time. And to be as efficient with their time as possible, I'm going to call you down two people at a time so that the next person can wait and read. So our first two speakers are Patricia Gray and April Mann.
Good morning, Patricia Gray, and I'm declaring my time to April Mann. If I didn't hear a speaking in the mic, so we can't hear you very well. Pull it down for me now. Out far. Everybody hear that? Okay, thank you.
If you find yourself struggling to navigate seven and five sections for pottery country, two miles from Randolph County Farm, or ease at the banquet restaurant, you have found Westmore. If you're searching for generations of families with deep rooted traditions in rural Moreland County, you have found Westmore. We are Westmore, and this is our story. Westmore Elementary is also proud of the student in the community. We proudly start the community since nineteen thirty-nine. Capital families have received their education from our school. Many of the families are for each year to support our annual college festival. Westmore is a very rural community. One where our school is unique is that we offer grades kindergarten through eighth. Our middle schoolers know that they not only answer to their current teachers, but in many cases, they answer to all the teachers they have in kindergarten. As staff members, we take pride in advancing our families and students. Traditionally, the staff at Westmore respires at Westmore. Some of us are students at Westmore and have chosen to come back to work here to give back to our community. As staff members, we are a family. We're like a forty piece puzzle. You wouldn't want to hang a forty piece puzzle on the wall with missing pieces. We know that budget cuts are looming, but it's hard to imagine our family with missing pieces. In order to provide the best education that our students deserve, we need each member of our... In order to provide the best education that our students deserve, we need each member of our family. As adults, we can figure out ways to make everything work. But the questions that we need to be asking ourselves are, what is best for our students? Without a full-time AP, how will all the needs of our students be met? Without custodians, how will we keep our school presentable and welcoming? Without instructional assistants and kindergarten and first grade, who will help ensure our youngest parents will receive the ageless support that those of students provide? The impact of arts, music, and P.E. is how our students are indescribable. These opportunities help shape our students and allow for creative growth. Our students deserve the same opportunities as every other student in North Carolina. In closing, we want you to know that Westmore believes in developing competent, responsible students in a safe learning environment. We have a responsibility to do what is right for the students that we serve. We believe in our students, in our community, in our sales, and in our school system. At this time, I would like to ask if there's anyone here tonight who would like to stand and support us at Westmore. Thank you for those who are standing for us. And we want to thank you, the county commissioners, for supporting our community's growth. Together, we must find a way to ensure the needs of the students throughout more county areas.
Amy Bunyan and Robert Christine. I'm Amy Bunyan and I'm standing here as a teacher at Westmore, but more importantly, as a parent. As I look at the scene where I am standing here tonight representing Westmore Elementary School, I see many classroom teachers and assistants that have directly impacted the lives of my children. The K-one teachers and assistants have helped my children get a good start to their educational career. More importantly, they have shown my children love and support. Cutting assistants would be a great assist service to our children. When my son comes home, he does not differentiate his assistant from his teacher. He recognizes that there are two teachers in that room and both are necessary. We, as adults, should recognize this as well. Community is very important to the culture of our school. We have an assistant principal who is a resident of our community. She knows our families and our kids. We do not need to lose someone who has a vested interest in our community. She can work alongside our principal to help build the relationships we need with our incoming kindergarten parents and our current parents. Why would we want to look at cutting this position instead of other places that are not as valuable? Even though art, music, and P.E. are safe for a year, I want to make a mention of their importance. Art and music foster creativity in our children and enhance math concepts. All the great inventions that we enjoy are a result of great minds open through creativity. P.E. gives our children opportunities to learn how to work as a team. Teamwork is vital for our children as they enter into colleges and the marketplace. Hashtag fully fund our schools is more than the latest trendy hashtag. It is a message that is powerful for our school, parents, our children, and you. These children will soon become members of society. Many will remain residents in Moore County. I think we can all agree that we are more competent individuals ready to become our future leaders and citizens. These virtues start with a firm foundation in education and a love of learning, which is nurtured in the early years of school. Please do not take our assistants away and please do not take our assistant principal. Our assistants work directly with our children alongside the classroom teacher to ensure that our children have a firm foundation. And our assistant principal helps to offer a familiar face with Todd that makes the parents of our school and students feel safe and welcome. In closing, I ask that you fully fund our school, Westmore Elementary, so that our children have the support they need to become rounded students and productive members of society. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Robert Christine, I'm the principal of Pinecrest High School.
So I don't know if you can hear my little timer up here, um, so if I think that you can, just announce that your time has expired, um, if you get to that. So that we don't distract commissioners from listening.
So I could use time for that. Again, I'm Robert Christine, I'm the principal of Pinecrest High School. Tonight, we can hear a lot of people speak. And we ask you to be educators and not politicians. You're going to make decisions in the best interest of kids and for more county schools. All the schools who appear tonight, listen and tend to me, please. Give us what we need, we have high expectations for you. I temper your judges to have high expectations for us if you don't give us what we need. With my remaining minutes, I would like to give it to my colleague, Melanie Jones.
Ms. Jones, do you have any concerns? Good evening, my name is Melanie Jones and this is my fifth year as an assistant principal. And I'm here to advocate for all of the assistant principals in this county. So if there are any other APs here tonight, could you please stand up? If you've ever ensured the safety of hundreds of students as they've gotten on and off the bus each day, if you've ever protected a child from a bully, if you've ever attended a two-hour IP meeting to ensure a student with a learning disability receives the resources he or she needs to be successful, you must be an assistant principal. If you've ever stayed late after an athletic event waiting for that last kid to be picked up, if you've ever taken an entire first grade class on a field trip to the zoo, if you've ever calmed an irate mom down by empathizing with her situation, you must be an assistant principal. If you've ever organized end-of-course testing, not once, but twice, for twenty-five hundred high school students, if you've ever observed conference and offered suggestions about instructional strategies to twenty-six teachers in a two-week time period, if you've ever acted as a mentor to an adverse student because you value building relationships, you must be an assistant principal. If you've ever spent half of your day conducting an investigation into a stolen lunchbox, if you've ever analyzed school data to create professional development for your teachers, if you've ever been the interim of a school during principal transition, then you must be an assistant principal. As you can see from just these few examples, assistant principals do not have a consistent, well-defined job description. Instead, they juggle multiple jobs every hour. It would be too difficult to provide you with the percentage of time an AP spends on discipline, professional development, testing, student achievement, or other vital tasks that support a positive school culture because that time would vary by AP and by school. However, the perception that an AP spends most of his or her time managing buses and Peds or disciplining students is a huge misconception. Like principals, assistant principals were classroom teachers who received a master's degree in school administration and who play a integral role in the day-to-day operations of a school. Currently, there are twenty-nine point two assistant principals in Moore County. The point two is a retired assistant principal who works one day a week at Cameron. Only eleven point seven of our APs are paid for by state dollars. So seventeen and a half of us are paid for through local funds. For a school district of twenty-three schools, including three high schools, we are allotted enough APs to staff an assistant principal in only half of our schools. We talk a lot about the student-to-teacher ratio, but let's talk for a second about the student-to-assistant principal ratio. Using the state's allotment, one assistant principal would have to support about eleven hundred students at any given time during any given day. Who wants to decide which schools get an AP and which ones deny? How effectively would those schools without an AP run? Who at the school level would help the principals support teachers and to improve student achievement? Well, we could ask the neighboring county those questions. Because of lack of state funding, that county does not staff an assistant principal at any but one of their elementary schools. And if you compare our district's state report card to theirs, you will see that their students' out-of-school suspension at the elementary level alone quadrupled the number of our county's suspensions. In addition, our elementary schools are outperforming their elementary students. Our college and career rating scores, the highest levels, four and five, are fourteen percentage points higher in reading, thirteen percentage points higher in math, and eleven percentage points higher in science. While I concede that there may be several reasons that contribute to an increase in discipline and a decrease in academics, I am positive that having an AP would improve the data in both of those areas. As an AP, we have the opportunity to impact both teachers and students and to collaborate with others who share our same passion for education. Currently, however, there is no financial incentive for a teacher to leave the classroom and enter into administration. North Carolina's principals and assistant principals pay ranks fifty-first out of fifty-five states and U.S. territories. And at this point, it doesn't look like we can depend on our state. So we plead with you all to reach deep, to fully fund our schools. We APs are in our positions because we aspire to be our schools and districts' future leaders of instruction, of change, of continued improvement. Data, such as what I've already shared, supports our effectiveness and our necessity. Please continue to partner with our school district and make it possible to continue having APs in all of our schools. Our principals need us, our schools need us, our students need us to support a positive school environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and just hold your applause, I know you all appreciate remarks. So every remark is just as important as the others. So please hold your applause until the very end of our purpose.
Amy Bunyan and Sean Keller. Mr. Keller, thank you for announcing this county president. And the next speaker will be Chelsea Byer.
Good evening, uh, Madam Commissioner, other commissioners. My name is Sean Keller, I come to you as a, as a parent of a student and a parent of two upcoming students and, uh, the current substitute teacher for more county schools. As my kids go through schools, I sort of look back at when I went through the schools. And, um, I look at the stuff I had, I went to school over twenty years ago. Um, I had gym, I had athletic clubs, I had snacks. I'm not, I'm educational for the trips, I went to, um, I was to say capital, I was at the art museum. I did educational stuff. Uh, my son does not do that right now, so it just sort of shocks me and how he was still considering budget cuts. And so much has already been cut out of schools in the past twenty years. Why are we still talking about budget cuts? It, it just, I, I don't understand. We should not be talking about budget cuts, that's the last thing we should be talking about. Uh, the other thing that I think we should be thinking about is, um, I'm in the military and a lot of, I'm retired military and a lot of things that deals in the military, second and third order effects. What we do today and what we vote on today, not only will it affect next year, it's going to affect the next five and six years. If you cut out, if you cut the budget and say gym gets cut, what happens to the kids? Obesity goes up. What happens when times of obesity goes up and it's already gone up? That causes health problems. The county ends up paying that through the hospitals, through Medicaid, through Medicare. What about all these, um, teachers and teachers assistants that lose their jobs? Teachers do not get paid enough as it is. Teachers assistants get paid even less. So therefore, they may have to claim unemployment. So it's a lot of second and third order effects that can easily be avoided with, um, with just approving the budget. Secondly, um, I believe it was the Aberdeen mayor or principal last night that spoke about how the students including public schools in Aberdeen and how the schools were so bad that they were all going to private schools. I even had experience of four years combined of private schools with my children in, in, um, preschool and pre-kindergarten private schools. They couldn't have attended the private schools, both schools, one living in Moore County, one living in Lee County, they could have gone to kindergarten through twelve. At the time they ended the pre-K four program, the private schools came to me and said, they are not ready for our school. Send them to the public school where the public school can catch them back up and then bring them back to the private school. I lived at private school, I said, thank you very much. I will send them to the public school, but that's where they will stay at. Because if they can't, if the private schools can't do it and the public schools can't, that's where I will, will stay.
Mr. Keller, your time is up.
Okay, can I just, I'll do my second?
That's a good discussion of the agenda.
Okay, um, two last points. Um, for Dr. Gannon, you mentioned the students did not know the, um, the P, the, uh, information about P-Day. If the budget cuts, there's going to be a lot of students that don't even know about nine eleven in ten or fifteen years. And lastly, I'm not sure how many commissioners were on the board about in the year two thousand and nine, but they approved a thirty-three point five million dollar budget for a new jail being popularly targeted for unsafe conditions for a hundred and twenty-six inmates that were overcharged by sixteen, said a hundred and ten. So why did you not approve a four point five million dollar budget for the future of our children and the current educators is beyond four point five million versus thirty-three point five.
Chelsea Byer is speaking on behalf of the High Falls. We want to personally thank each of you for advocating and supporting us and all of the more county schools. High Falls Elementary School began observing its community in the late eighteen hundreds as a hundred schoolhouse. It quickly became the heart of the community. Due to our rural location and willingness to provide means for locally funded positions, has enabled High Falls to positively impact our students and community. The Board of Education and county commissioners, both past and present, have demonstrated dedication and belief in small class sizes and small schools. Due to this philosophy, High Falls Elementary School has a great sense of community and is the cornerstone of multi-generational traditions and academic athletes. Our students receive more attention academically and emotionally. And our administration knows our kids personally. No one is overlooked at our class. All staff, certified and classified, are essential to meet the needs of each and each student that are around them. Each faculty member is needed, from the guidance counselor who makes sure our students have shoes on our feet, to the custodian who provides a clean and orderly environment. Losing any member of our faculty would negatively impact the future of our students. The ability to maintain and continually K-A school allows our older students the opportunity to have teenage peers who are positive and informative. Just recently, our middle school junior band club led a school-wide service project. All students participated in packing over twelve thousand meals for humanitarian aid in the United States and Haiti. Our crackery and elementary students witness daily older students serving the community and follow in our process. Our students are more confident because they know what to expect moving from dry levels. Our cultural arts department, CTE program, is connected with digital transformation and aligns with standards for curriculum. Our schedule is designed to let students gain exposure to various interests so they can make informed decisions about their future endeavors. High Falls is a strong force for preparing students to choose paths for the new agency center. Your support, your coming, allows smaller class sizes that benefit disadvantaged students. Unfortunately, emotional and physical trauma exists in a lot of our kids. At High Falls, these issues are recognized quickly and resources are utilized to resolve situations as soon as possible. and resources are utilized to resolve situations as soon as possible. Recently adopted proclamation of the Clay Bowl was Travis Peace Prevention Month, and we thank you for supporting our children ever since. The larger class size is lingeringly worried that this will impede on the individualized attention per student and their families. Excuse me. The funding we give supports our teachers so that we can personalize learning that is evident in our text and statement from the state of North Carolina. Back in residence, since our community lacks access to curriculum-centered preschools. Our teacher working condition survey stands out positively not only in Moore County, but in the state of North Carolina. Our digital story on Twitter and Facebook emphasizes that High Falls Elementary School is gaining recognition as hashtag "small school, big impact." Just recently, three principals visited our school from Cumberland and Spitaling Counties to observe a group instruction in digital transformation. Visitors always praise Moore County for their dedication to their schools and digital initiatives. We owe what others from surrounding school systems want to be. Your funding supports flexible seating, flexible grouping, and playing time for teacher autonomy with lesson design that is most effective with rigor and individualization. Even though we are a rural, tolerant school, High Falls feeds into North Shore High School, who has one of the highest graduation rates around. High Falls has two fundraisers a year, the annual Fall Festival and this year, the eighty-second annual Old Time Pilgrims Convention. The overwhelming community support of these events enables us to offer field trip experiences, robotics, collective choices, and support our teachers, which include much needed supplies and supplementary curriculum resources. Our community is totally involved and invested in our school. An example of this was the overwhelming survey and support and voices heard with the debate of High Falls being spelled with one word or two words arose last year. Our community is humble, but will speak loudly because they know and value what High Falls Elementary School means to the community and its children. Tonight, on behalf of our High Falls family and our community, we humbly submit to each of you the request to remain true to Moore County's traditions of totally supporting and funding our schools, including our rural school. We charge each of you with meeting the expectations of the people in Moore County to fully fund and continue to be the school system that others want to be. Budget shortfall should never affect children away from their forecasting to this fall. We do not make the decisions that each of you made regarding where money will come from, but we are the ones who can tell you, "We need it and we expect nothing less." We are going on record that High Falls Elementary School expects the federal, states, and local governing bodies to put our children and us first, to care about our future through the educational life of our children. Always remember that High Falls Elementary School is, and always will be, a small school with a big impact, and we expect to remain the way we are with the resources that our children deserve. Anyone here to support High Falls, please say it.
Debbie Nigga, Governor and Attorney Lady. Thank you, Governor and Attorney Lady. I'm Andrea Hall. And sorry to interrupt, Nathan Omen. Yes, we are.
Good evening. My name is Attorney Andrea Hall. I'm a rising senior at Pinecrest High School.
My name is Nathan Omen, and I'm a rising eighth grader in the Central District School. What is the point of even entering school if I don't even get a quality education? With the budget quickly diminishing, we must realize the impact it will have on us. Our first problem is overcrowding in classrooms. We must comprehend that teachers with the immense crowd in their classrooms will be unable to truly teach the curriculum to each individual. In addition to overcrowding, students will be less involved, less focused, and more distracted. This will lead to less effective education and ultimately a less successful future. Our second concern is less faculty administration. The overwhelming fault of more work for a teacher that is already responsible for an overcrowded class makes them very stressed and unable to teach a quality education. In addition, with less faculty, it's harder to enforce school policies. Less enforcement of school policies will lead to less disciplined students and a less safe environment. Also, when we have a smaller number of staff, maybe the current accessible activities will not be cut until we have some extra.
I am asking you to fully fund our schools so we can have assistant principals. When I first started Pinecrest, I had no desire to go there. Chief Hansen, Vice Principal at Pinecrest High School, toured my mother and I. He looked me in the eye and he said, "You belong here. We need you here. You will make a difference." This made tremendous impact on me and is the reason I'm standing in front of you today. This type of relationship occurs with not just myself, but all of the students. Chief Hansen knew every student in the courtyard by any. These type of relationships are why we need assistant principals. Thirty to forty students following me from the private school to Pinecrest, and it is because they are made to feel important in a school of twenty-three hundred kids. There are many Chief Hansen's got for Moore County school system. And the position of assistant principal impacts Moore County students every day. They help make a large school feel small. This is why we are asking you to please, please, increase funding for Moore County schools. Without the guidance of our teachers and administrators, our opportunities for it will decrease. Just remember, we are the generation that will be running the world in the future. I am here today to honor Chief Hansen and the administration of Pinecrest High School and the impact they've made on my life. And if Chief Hansen likes me, say, "Go pass." Thank you very much.
Blake Cooper and Allison Jones.
So good evening. My name is Blake Cooper. I'm a senior at Pinecrest High School, getting ready to attend the university at North Carolina Chapel Hill in Fall. And I've been a part of the Moore County school system since I was in kindergarten. But I'm here tonight because over the past twelve years, I've been very involved in several activities that could be in grave danger if our school system does not continue to be fully funded. I took four years in Pinecrest Chamber Choir in an honors media program. However, the program that has had the largest effect on my life is the teaching of Beijing. I joined the team as a freshman who had barely traveled outside of the state and who had never even been on a plane before. However, that year, I was given the opportunity to truly see excellence as I went to prestigious universities such as Harvard and Yale to see what some of the country's best and brightest had at offer. Fast forward forty years, and this activity has taken me on a journey that I never could have foreseen. I reached the final round at seven of those national innovationals. I got to spend three weeks at D Stanford University in the summer. I had stints where I was ranked number one in the nation. And just last week, I joined the elite few who have had the privilege of calling themselves a national champion. Throughout my debate career, I've always been proud to say that I was from a small town of Pinecrest, Pinehurst, representing Pinecrest and Moore County schools. But it hasn't always been easy. You see, we live in a world where public schools are severely underfunded and underappreciated. I can remember sitting in that final round of nationals and looking around and noticing that no other competitor was from a public school. They came from private schools who had endless amounts of funding and almost endless amounts of coaching. Now, being in front of the arts and other activities have allowed me to become a well-rounded student who can hopefully be able to tackle any problem that comes to me in the real world. That's why it's imperative to continue fully funding our schools. The athletic programs, physical education, the arts, all of these programs in Moore play a vital role in providing our kids with the skill sets they need to become a good citizen of the world. And any cuts to the already underfunded programs in our county would be a disservice to the children and the families in it. I would be forever grateful that I was giving teachers who saw anything potentially be great. But we now stand at a crossroads. I see kids every day who are more talented and more driven than I am. And it's you guys who will decide when we turn these kids into well-rounded individuals who can serve our country and our world in the best way possible. You hold the power to create more artists, more athletes, more scholars, and hopefully, more champions. So please, invest in the future of our world by continuing to fully fund our schools and our kids. Thank you.
Every room has to be broken again. Thanks for our congratulations. Such an impressive victory. Congratulations. Listen.
Alright. My name is Allison Jones. I have three children in Moore County schools. Next year, they will be in fourth, seventh, and ninth grades at Bass Lakeview, Crane Street, and Union Pines. Like myself, many military families specifically chose Moore County for the schools. As you know, there is a huge amount of growth in our county right now, and a large part of that is military families who are coming here for the community and schools. One of the first things a military family will do when they are moving is research schools. I was not hopeful when I researched schools in the Fort Wright area. I cannot tell you how excited I was when I found Moore County. I have volunteered at Bass Lakeview for several years by seeing the hardships that this school is facing. The infrastructure is not built for the children who are currently there, and our community only keeps growing. We need this new area-run school to alleviate these problems. I have stood in the hallway while several dozen kids are trying to use the bathroom after recess. Speaking of bathrooms, there's only two. Student bathrooms at each end of the building. There are at least six hundred and fifty children, approximately a hundred and fifty over capacity. We have too many students to even fit inside of our building. I have learned that in order to save our arts and music programs that there will be cuts in other departments, such as front office. Bass Lakeview currently only has one part-time receptionist. With a school of our size, a bookkeeper, and our data manager do not have the time to do their jobs and do what a receptionist does. Our first grade teachers only have a TA for four days a week, and the other four days, they lose their TA for approximately an hour each day. I also suck. I have been in those classrooms with no TA and twenty-some course graders. It's not easy. I know that Crane Street and Union Pines are facing similar issues and also cannot afford to lose any of their staff, whether it be front office, custodians, or media assistants. There are far too many students at Crane Street for one person to run their library and handle the million of chromebook issues that they have. Our teachers are already stretched so thin and they would be forced to pick up slack in all of these areas. I have heard that cuts are being looked at for the curriculum staff at the county office. The vision of the curriculum department is all students will engage in innovative and rigorous standards-based instruction every day to ensure success in school, career, and community. This is a department in which cuts would directly affect our teacher and therefore our students as well. The last part of that vision said, "To ensure success in school, career, and community." I love our community. I want it to thrive. That's why I'm here. That's why we're here. I love my kids. We all do. We will fight for them. Please show the people of our community, and especially the children of our community, that you will fight for them and fully fund our schools. In closing, my understanding is that Moore County and North Carolina spends approximately three or four thousand dollars less on child public education than any other state. I love getting things on sale, but my children's education is not one of them.
Please hold your applause. Thank you. Danielle Armstrong, chair of the.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Martin Strong. I'm a teacher assistant and the ISS coordinator at New Century Middle School, where I've been employed for three years. I am also the Teacher Assistant of the Year at New Century Middle School and runner-up Teacher Assistant of the Year for Moore County Schools. So what I say tonight, I hope represents all of the TAs in this county very well. My family moved here sixteen years ago to begin a career in funeral service. And after working for an extended time in the funeral industry, I had a calling to enter into the field of education and make a difference in our schools. So I gained the position at New Century Middle School. I am very concerned and I have a heavy heart that our schools face the chance of not being fully funded. I am concerned personally, professionally, and as a taxpayer. Personally, I have been a taxpayer in this county for sixteen years. And now, if not fully funded, I will face the loss of five days of work and pay and my wife, who leaves her positions, receptions at Bass Lakeview Elementary School. I've also had a child in the school system who has six years of education and earned a high school diploma, and I worry that she's not going to have the same opportunities that we have heard this young man have. Professionally, a job to support teachers in meeting the diverse needs of children every day. The decrease in central office support and support staff as a result of the budget will make teachers less able to provide the high-quality education that our county is known for. As a taxpayer, I am concerned that Moore County's second-largest employer is cutting positions and work hours. Sustained economic growth, which funds all of our programs, is largely dependent on people and businesses moving into Moore County. Without quality, fully-staffed schools, this will not happen. Board of Commissioners, I am asking that you truly consider making the necessary decisions to save our schools from losing what they can afford to lose. Our students, our teachers, and all who make Moore County's school straight deserve this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I had different speech prepared to give tonight. I have school facts and figures and college statistics and things to leave.
May I just stand a little closer, please?
Better?
Yes.
I had program fact-check and I even practiced it. But I'm not going to give that speech tonight. Instead, I'm going to use my time before you to talk about something that we don't ever talk about in Moore County, and that's the poor people. We like to pretend they don't exist. We like to hide them behind our million-dollar homes in Pinehurst and our pristine golf courses and our big boats out on Lake Arm. But they do exist, and they live in our communities. And they send their children to public schools in this county. I know a lot about these poor people because up until recently, I was one of them. In my house, we never talked about Robin Peter to pay Paul. We talked about Robin Chalane to pay Chalane. I'm sorry, Helen, you have to use your mother's tweets now and folk today because this needs money for a field trip. Or I'm sorry, sis, but you have to have Lundy in your lunchbox this week because your brother needs a pair of shoes. These are the kind of struggles that the poor people deal with every day. The one bright spot for the poor people in Moore County is that their children have access to excellent public schools. It was such a blessing for me to know that my kids got the same quality education as those rich kids living in those big houses in Pinehurst. Nothing levels a landfill for children living in poverty more than excellent public education. It's easy for politicians to say they don't want to raise property taxes because we don't want to hurt them. But the math doesn't support that. A two-cent tax raise on property only costs an additional hundred dollars a year or more if the person has more than half a million dollars in property. Residents with property value at less than a hundred thousand dollars would see an annual increase of twenty dollars or less. If you think the poor people in this county are unwilling to go without their favorite supper eight lundy more a week in order to ensure that their kids get good education, then you're not getting them in a hungry. Finally, as much as we all want to talk about how we care of our poor, so much as we do, most of the time inadvertently excludes them from our political processes. And I'll give you an example. Last month's debacle, people had to take more time off work and they had to spend more gas money to come to two meetings rather than one. That costs more than twenty dollars, which is more than a two-cent tax increase. Thank you for the opportunity.
At the beginning, I would like to say that this is our chance to show the kids in here how to hold a public hearing with a holder respectfully. Please, listen. Do not clap at the chair. You will have an opportunity to clap for everybody. No one is more important than the other when they come up and speak. We're here to listen to every speaker and hear every word. But I would like for us to be adults and again, show the young people how we can show respect in a public hearing. I don't have to say this again. Thank you.
Johnson, Walmsley, and Mike Griffin.
Hello, I'm Johnson Walmsley. I want to ask you not to boo me, because you may feel like it. I hope you'll hear everything I've got to say before you boo. I'm very upset. I'm upset with our legislature. I'm upset that they can steal our money from our supply. And I could talk about that all you want, but I've only got three minutes. They can take our money, and they can blame, they can make us turn on our county commissioners. Good people, people just like us, people who ran for office and won, and care about our schools just as much as we do. And I would like to see you, and I know you're probably just, that's real cute, Jonathan, when I leave, draft the joint resolution for the school board and yourselves and tell our legislature we want our money back, demand. Now, some of you are probably thinking, "They don't have that kind of money at the state." Wait till you hear this. This year, they have an $851 million surplus. Surplus! That's our money! You think that's bad? Wait till you hear this. $1.2 billion rainy day fund. $1.2 billion. Right? If you're listening to me, and I doubt if you are, because you never listen, $1.22 billion rainy day fund, it's raining like hell in Moore County, and we want our money back.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Griffin. Well, I've been out in Moore County for over 30 years. We raise both our sons here, and both our sons are in Moore County Schools for kindergarten, graduation, and 12th grade. And Moore County Schools made a tremendous positive difference in their lives. And we will always appreciate them. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. More importantly, thank you for listening. And for your genuine concern for the school funding issues is addressed by our community, business leaders, school leaders, teachers, parents, and our students. We appreciate the work that you do to keep Moore County strong, announcing the needs and expectations of our citizens, and supporting the outstanding teams of employees that provide services every day. You're also ensuring taxpayers that our funds are spent wisely, are used to maintain and enhance our quality of life, while continuously striving to make our county stronger. The rest of my comments today will focus on three words: leadership, vision, and courage. We believe in your leadership, vision, and courage. And thank you for working with our school board, as well as the outstanding bench teams of both Moore County and Moore County Schools. You put together a budget that is a positive step in the right direction, helping to close the budget gap created by significant funding changes at the state level. Our school board has also shown leadership, vision, and courage, working diligently to maintain an appropriate level of service while continually describing ongoing improvements for our students. Over the past several years, our schools have made dramatic and significant cuts in positions, in programs, and operational costs. Without additional funding above the current proposed budget, our schools will be forced to continue these dramatic cuts, further impacting the short-term and long-term educational outcomes that we all expect for our students. Please continue to work with our school board on additional funding, working together, our schools, our county, our community. We all have a leadership, vision, and courage to make this happen. We can make positive budget changes now and work towards additional revenue sources for the future. Our schools add tremendous value to communities and families and make a positive difference every day in the lives of our students. In closing, today, the future of our students is in our hands. More importantly, our future, the future of our community, the future of our society is in the hands of our students. So let's show our students that we believe in them. Let's show our students that we believe in their potential and in their ability to continue moving us forward. Let's show our students that we believe in their leadership, their vision, and their courage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Spain and Sean Prinzipi.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Mark Spain. I have served for a while. And I have had the privilege of being in the schools since the day I moved here. And it's just amazing for me to see this transpired over the last seven, eight years as it relates to planning for our students. I'm going to do something that I did when we did this back for a little town hall about malice. Anybody out there would like to voice their approval of the two-cent property tax raise and a half a percent raise on sales tax? There's a 77% of the other jury-mandated voters as we sit in front of you. And now, it's going to be a little personal about this one. Something that rising age raises, 7th grade, he took the high score ACT, the scores, and qualified him for college. But he's not going back to school, because he has to have classes. He has to have resources. He would be home with me next year, home school, my absolute last option. I cannot explain how hard Mr. Manziel, our West Palm Middle principal, staff, Mr. Bing, our AIG teacher, they have gone above and beyond for me. But it's just not about them. It's about all of our children. It's about the resources that they all need. I had a conversation with Mr. Christina at High Press Tech School. There is nothing there. It's unbelievable. What do we have to do, first of all, our children? It's not your children. It's our children. It's not your tax dollars. It's our tax dollars. At the end of that town hall meeting, one of our elected officials beautifully came up to the mic, patted this one ahead and said, "Leon, we really think long and hard before reaching your pocket and taking the tax dollars." How about an adult conversation about reaching into our pockets and giving us our tax dollars back? Find a way to resolve this idiotic three-tier tax system that we are dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners and Madam Chair, I want to thank you for the privilege of speaking this evening. My name is Sean Prinzipi. I'm the principal of Pickney, the county's alternative school here in Cartridge. And I've been thinking about what I could say tonight that would be useful. And I think it's useful to use the analogy of a Honda Civic. When I was in high school, my friend Doug had a 1980 Honda Civic. Those cars were simple little hatchbacks that were great on gas. Doug loved to tell us that he got better than 40 miles per gallon, and he had a little notebook in which he kept track of his fuel costs and calculated his miles per gallon. Because that was the way he measured the value of his car. More than 35 years later, the new Honda Civic still only dips around 40 miles per gallon, but in so many ways, it's a completely different car. The engine has about 100 more horsepower, and the car's full of airbags, and antilock brakes, and touch controls, and automatic everything that make it about 1,000 pounds heavier. So the engine's bigger and stronger and better in so many technical and mechanical ways, but by Doug's value measurement, no better than 37 years ago, and worse to a certain extent, because the car is far more expensive to make than purchase now. But modern standards and tastes require Honda to offer that very different car. Our school district faces similar challenges. Our car is 1,000 pounds heavier, too. Sometimes they didn't sell you with a simpler car that got us around just fine, but they don't make those cars anymore because they're not marketable, because miles per gallon is not the only measure by which we value our cars. Our school district has to keep pace with modern standards. Some are mandated by the state, and some are just expectations of our community. And those standards strain us with financial burdens and other constraints, and we're constantly maneuvering just to keep up, and in our best moments, get ahead of them. One of our primary responsibilities as public service is to develop, attract, and keep good citizens, make lifelong customers, so to speak. We want to maintain Moore County's exceptionalism because we are exceptional. I respect the mission statement of the county commissioners, to provide exceptional services to make Moore County a premier community in which to live, work, and raise a family. Raise a family. We want families to love what our schools provide the way my dad's mileage-obsessed friend loved his little roller skate of a car. It may seem like we're asking for a Mercedes, but we're really just talking about a Honda Civic. I wish the state would help us out a little more. They should. But when they don't, we pull together as a community, because that's what premier communities do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Calabian and Jennifer Abra.
Good evening. Madam Chair, fellow Commissioners, my name is Tyler Calabian, and I live in Cartridge, North Carolina, and have lived in Moore County my entire life. As a digital integration facilitator for Moore County Schools, I'm here tonight to speak to you about the media tech assistant positions in our district. I wrote an article in April for our blog about the importance of these folks in our school system. I compared the work they do to the feet of a duck keeping it float on the water of a pond. This image is a perfect representation of our digital learning initiatives here in Moore County. From the community onlooker, the digital learning showcase, robotics events, and STEM camps look amazing, and they are. They are exhibitions of all the hard work and creativity teachers and students put into digital learning in our county. The quality of these types of events, and many more, are what is at stake with our budget crisis. If the cuts proposed are made, the domino effect will subsequently take its toll on the level of learning and engagement that is taking place in our schools. This media tech assistant position is one in danger of being lost in Moore County Schools. Without a doubt, this position has been most valuable in the rollout, collection, and day-to-day maintenance of our digital learning initiative. I have seen the impact the media tech assistants have on a daily basis for the last four years at Northmore High School. Janine Garner, Media Tech Assistant at Northmore High School and 28-year veteran of the Moore County School System, works tirelessly every day, so I am able to meet the teachers more and spend less time fixing mousepads and wireless issues with the Chromebooks. Because of Janine Garner, our media specialist, John Davis, can work with students and teach them how to research properly and cite their sources for research papers. Because of Janine Garner, teachers can continue to teach with minimal disruption when there are technology issues. Because of Janine Garner, students have a go-to person when their Chromebook is not working. Because of Janine Garner, our turnaround time for Chromebook repairs has been drastically reduced. Because of the media tech assistants, our digital learning initiative has been a success. So while the public sees the duck gliding across the water, please don't lose sight of the work being done that you can't see. Moore County has become more than a retirement community, more than a golf destination. With the growth of our military population, more young families are choosing Moore County to reside because of our high-quality education programs not available in surrounding counties. Our community's students deserve this. Thank you.
Thank God for listening to us. That's the first step of communication. I wanted to talk about planting our trees. We will never sit under the shade of. Moore County is much like the mighty oak tree. Every morning I wake up, I look out my window at this beautiful source of strength, just like my parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents did before me. Myself and my children do this daily, as will their children and grandchildren in years to come. This mighty oak, just like Moore County, was planted by those before us, knowing that it has never stood under the shade of it. Our foundation and roots of our county were set up to make things better for us and our children. Our roots are our grandparents, parents, military, schools, faith, service, love, dedication, and values. Strong roots build strong families and strong communities. Our core, our strength, our trunk is Moore County, strong and solid. Our branches and leaves are our community services, county commissioners, churches, school board, leaders and teachers. They support our families and grow throughout the years and change like the seasons often do. Our children are the acorns, storing all the strength from the roots and knowledge from the branches and leaves. One day, these acorns will leave the tree and plant one of their own. Once again, planting the trees they know they will never sit under the shade of. On another thought, decisions for our schools need to be made by those who want what's best for our schools, much like potatoes. If you don't help plant potatoes, dig them up, wash them, peel them, cook these potatoes, then please don't tell us or me how to serve them and eat them. Meaning, if you don't see firsthand how our public schools are needed for our children, then you shouldn't be able to make choices affecting their schools and futures. We need to voice our concerns about the taxes. I know everybody doesn't want to pay taxes, but for my six children to go eat at McDonald's or Taco Bell or even Little Caesar's, that's more than our taxes, Chris would think. So I know everybody can afford that. And I wanted to let y'all know I shared my thoughts with them and a lifesaver, because Moore County Schools has been a lifesaver for me. I'm a proud graduate of Union Pines like these proud alumni at Bass Lakeview, and so are my children. I have six. Five in the school, one graduating, and one coming up. And y'all are lifesavers. Y'all are the world right now. I'm so grateful that they've done it to you. But I just wanted to share how much I appreciate that. And thank you very much for your time and light.
Thank you.
Sterling Hayford and Ken Hitler.
Mr. Hayford ready?
Yes, how are you doing? Good evening, I'm Sal Hayford. I'm a retired Moore County Substitute Teacher, full-time student, and hopefully a year or two as a Moore County Teacher. Tonight, I'm also going to board with a father of six children. Tonight, I'm also going to board with a father, six children, three of which are currently in vassal, you two have gone through, and one still away. When I called vassal you to ask that similar question, because I'd forgotten, I didn't answer because we have a rich sister that knows everything needs to be answered. When my child falls in the playground, she's the one that takes care of him during her nurse days of week. And she's the one that calls me and says, "Hey, your child fell." And she's, "Okay, don't worry about it. Just wanted to let you know." When somebody comes to sign in, they're the one to make sure they're signing. So anytime there's something happen, we would know who's in our schools. Next year, as we add security doors, that person will also be in charge of access control. To me, it's a big thing. And as I look at it, and you're cutting from the budget, that's a big cut because now all those hats have to be given to somebody else. Our financial manager, our counselors, our assistant principals, our principals, they're going to be the ones that have to sit there. I see it happen sometimes, but that receptionist is late or not there that hits a stroke. They have a lot of other stuff already to do it. If we keep putting extra hats, something's going to slip through the cracks. It's going to be our shoulder. And we can't afford that. Not for what the cost of their salaries. We cannot afford it. And so I would ask that you fully fund our schools and remember those small positions do not, they may seem like us, and that's easy. You know that position. But they play such a key role in our schools. And that's all I got to say.
Good evening, all county commissioners. I'm Ken Headman, Director of Technology for Moore County Schools. In fourteen years, I've been privileged to be part of a team serving Moore County staff, teachers, and most importantly, our students. You're all aware of the major work being done by the instructional side of our technology department. Steve Johnson and the team of DIS have a big instrumental showing our technology integration and enhance all sorts of subjects and aspects of classroom instruction. I'd like to talk today about the technical support team that helps make this happen. This is through our team of technicians and media and tech assistants in schools. First of all, numbers give you the scope of our organization. Moore County Schools has one thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight employees, twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety students, and eighteen thousand nine hundred and twelve total devices spread across the county in twenty-three different sites. These are supported by a technology support team of fourteen full staff and eight media and tech assistants. Comparing this to your environment with six hundred and fifty staff users, approximately one thousand devices, and twelve technology staff, Moore County Schools' technology supports over ten times the devices and one and a half to ten times the users per tech staff in Moore County Local Government OT. Put another way, one would hardly argue that students is not a game that needs to be supported. They use devices, have accounts that they need to manage and license in multiple systems, and have data that is critical to assignments and academic progress. Comparing us to a corporation, out of more than one million corporations registered nationally, fewer than one thousand have as many internal users to support as Moore County Schools. This info is just for what and the who. The more important point is the why. Having media and tech assistants in our one-one schools allows our media specialists or certified educational professionals to concentrate on their instructional mission. Who among us wouldn't argue that students need guidance on becoming a responsible digital citizen? Learning not only how to navigate through the vast quantity of information available online, but more importantly, how to use critical thinking to draw up our research skills to identify reliable sources. Media specialists can do this work because they have a team of dedicated media and tech assistants to handle the day-to-day operations of check-in and check-out, in-repair control, and frontline support for technology. As an example, at this very school, our maintenance and tech assistant has closed three hundred support tickets this year, while our field tech has had two hundred and fifty tickets escalated to his level. Reverse statements that if we lose these positions, our schools will just have to make do. I'd like to make the following point. Even if the support people are gone, the same amount of work remains. If we lose these positions, we can ensure that the level of support from Moore County Schools, staff, teachers, and students will decrease. If we lose these positions, we can ensure that quality and instructional work media specialists are able to provide our students will also decrease. I ask that the county commissioners consider the value of all of our support staff as they work with the school district to meet the needs of our teachers and students. Thank you.
Monty English and Kirk Evans.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Monty English. I am here today as both a concerned Moore County associate and a very proud citizen. Over the past several months, school funding has been an issue my daughter has encouraged me to follow more closely because, as she has reminded me, it greatly affects our community and each one of us within. A few weeks ago, she sent me a list of possible budget cuts Moore County Schools will face if we fail to fully fund the school board budget request. Although all possible cuts are concerning, two of the proposed cuts have been stood out to me. Funds to maintain and repair current facilities or maintenance funding to each school. My increased concern with these items may seem strange to some people here tonight. But if you have driven through problems lately, you have seen that we have been working extremely hard to make sure buildings within city limits are well-maintained and they have not been, that the necessary repairs are made in order to bring the property back into compliance with our town orders. Recent projects such as restoring the Robbins Depot, planning that the old Miltonville site, and that they can program equipment in the Freshwater Park are just some of the efforts we have made in order to show that Robbins is a town that is proud of its past and excited about the future, its future. I truly believe efforts such as these have happened and will continue to help in attracting new visitors to our area. So obviously, I am concerned that the food will be making sure schools in Robbins area are well-maintained and have the necessary funds for repair. To echo what my vassal few parents said a few weeks ago, we don't want to be forgotten. Other than when I served overseas, I have lived in Moore County my entire life. Moore County, Robbins is my home. Unfortunately, this place I call home has seen firsthand what happens when you are forgotten. For so many reasons, Robbins area schools, really all of Moore County schools, need the money to be there. During a conversation my daughter recently shared with me, a study of school funding. We showed just how much of a difference money can make in a community. For example, school districts that positively increase their spending saw graduation rates that rose by twenty-three percent points among low-income students and adult poverty rates that fell by twenty percent points. Results such as these, without a doubt, make a lasting impact in a community like ours. Four out of the five schools in Robbins area and fourteen out of the top twenty-three within the Moore County School District are Title I. Or, in other words, have a large population of low-income, poverty-stricken students. Having said all of this, I feel it is necessary to also mention this time difficult Robbins Town official, how scary it is to receive any initial funding from the state or federal government because Moore County is considered a tier-three county or one of the most wealthy counties in our state. What this means is that areas such as Robbins, which if considered a separate event and would without a doubt be a tier-one community, cannot receive the same amount of federal or state funding as surrounding tier-one and tier-two communities or counties. Until the state does something about this, and address this tier system, I feel that the county needs to make every effort in meeting our school funding needs so that we can ensure that high-quality education is provided to all of our students. So I hope you will reconsider fully funding the Moore County School Board budget request because I believe that money which is invested well, especially within education, can make enormous difference to the welfare of everyone in our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, county chairman and fellow commissioners. My name is Kirk Evans. I'm here today as a Moore County citizen, parent, and educator urging you to help us fully fund our schools by whatever means necessary. Last year, I made the decision to leave my job as an instructional coach with Moore County Schools so that I could stay at home with my children until they are old enough to attend these same schools. Making the decision to step away from the people and the work I care so deeply about and such is hard. I can honestly say I loved working as a Moore County teacher and administrator just as much as I love this time and now I can spend with my family. I was proud of the work teachers and I were doing with our students and excited about the resources and support the curriculum department has provided for all Moore County teachers, I still am. And I look forward to returning to the wonderful work these people are doing in the future. However, I am worried that access to necessary digital tools and textbooks a well-resourced team of educators and support services will be lost. If not in the next few months, then definitely within the next year. And I'm tired of the debate over whether or not we should be spending one eye on education and wondering if financial support will change. We see there is no debate, and the time for change has long passed. We know that research shows money makes a difference in education. Studies show that funding directly affects educational outcomes such as academic performance, graduation rates, and college attendance. It also affects incarceration rates and has a higher impact on poverty reduction than any other social reform. Unfortunately, people who are not in education often have trouble understanding how paying for people as well as resources contribute to making such differences. And honestly, many of us in education get so wrapped up in the labor of our work that we forget. We forget that people outside of education cannot always see the impact we see in our own schools and classrooms. Recently, I was reminded by one of my professors in education, and I quote, "We begin to digest the future with pulling back the curtain, opening the window, and letting in more life." However, she pointed out, all too often, we look at the window rather than through it, which is what I feel has been happening the past several years concerning educational spending within the county budget. We have become so consumed with waiting to see what the federal and state government or even surrounding local governments and school districts will do that we have failed to do anything ourselves, and as a result, our children and our communities are suffering consequences. In closing, I ask you to reconsider fully funding the Moore County School Board's budget request. But more importantly, I ask you, I also stand here asking you pleading really with you to reconsider how our county will fund our schools in the future. If the world we give our children is different from the one we envisioned for them, maybe we need to discover the moments when we, weirdly distracted and conflicted, davened, let the curtain fall back across that window and settle for a little less life. Will this be one of those moments? Or will you, our county commissioners, join us, the citizens, parents, and educators of Moore County, in letting the state know that the time for fully funding our schools is now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Parsons and Virginia Hyden.
Good evening. Madam Chairman and fellow county commissioners, I am Linda Parsons, President and CEO of the Moore County Chamber of Commerce. Now, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again regarding the issue of funding for the Moore County Schools. Over the last several months, and again tonight, our community has heard from residents, business leaders, and community advocates on the importance of fully funding our public schools. In February of this year, I stood before you with that same plea. The Moore County Chamber of Commerce position has not altered. We have been out in front of our campaign to educate our members and our community and have taken an active role in conversation. Our schools are critical to our community's continued economic vitality. We can no longer stand idle and wait another year to address these growing concerns. As a business organization that has served the community for the past fifty years, this is certainly not the first and probably not the last occasion that we will be vocalizing an opinion on school funding. It is critical to the basis of the chamber's mission, to foster a vibrant business community. The economic future of our county depends on high-quality schools that prepare every student for success in the workplace or college. Ensuring our schools receive the funds they need to prepare our students is a concern of your business community. I said this in February and I'll say it again. We need to find a long-term solution. By addressing the threat of creating such shortcomings in our local system and focusing as a community, we'll groom the next generation, create a strong workforce, and continue to attract further investment for our community and spur innovation. Think about what an amazing opportunity you have in your hands. Is there more work to be done? Yes. Does the Moore County Chamber of Commerce have all the answers? No. But I am sure you can find nothing or delaying a solution isn't the answer. Now is the time to do something impactful. You have the ability to make a statement that our schools and our economic standing in this state and in our region continues to flourish. As you deliberate over the best solutions, I ask you to ensure that our children receive the highest quality of education possible and that those guided in development have the best resources and opportunities for success made available to them. It's not going to be an easy task, we recognize that, but one that will ensure our county's economic future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janine Hyder, and I have been a military spouse for over twenty years, and my husband has served our country for almost thirty years. As we reach the end of our military service and our children reach high school age, it becomes important to stabilize them in one place to go through high school. We looked at a variety of places, and we kept hearing, "Moore County." We looked at class size, test scores, music, art, sports programs, and the safety of the students. And again, the answer was Moore County. We moved here and found out that this was a great place to live. My oldest, a ninth grader, has been in eleven different schools, and we have seen both good and bad schools. Moore County currently offers a well-rounded education. I have been impressed with how fiscally conservative they are of the public funds, but I have also realized that the schools were moving towards a bridge too far, and here we stand. My children have attended schools that have made the cuts you are looking at making. Media centers have been cut in other localities, and the results are devastating. Reading is the single easiest way to increase the success and empathy of our students. The value of the arts, music, and sports also builds successful students. My son has autism. Music was crucial to his learning to speak. Sports like last have been crucial in his development. He has gone from having a full-time aide to being an independent student with minimal support. A well-rounded education helps him and all of our students become productive citizens. If we are going to survive as a country, we have got to get back to focusing on our students. They will be the nurses and doctors that care for us, the mechanic, plumber, and IT person that keeps our work working well, and the farmer that feeds us. Schools that make the cuts you are looking at become about managing students, not educating them. My children have been in those schools. Schools that were crippled by lawsuits that resulted from kids falling through the cracks and increased problems with bullies and violence. I have volunteered hundreds of hours at my school here because I respect money's height, and we must all roll up our sleeves and work together to solve these problems with the budget and concerns. And concerns. The time to debate is past. Let's figure this out. Be it through zoning to slow growth or increased impact taxes on new residential development to help build the infrastructure, let's find businesses that will increase tax revenue. Can we please get a Costco? Seek more corporate support, grants, and look at innovative ways to reduce costs with rent arrogations. And lastly, utilize the military population that is moving here to live and retire. When you ask a soldier why they served the country, they say, "To make a difference in the country and the world so it will be a better place for their family." Moore County is very supportive of the military and veterans. I ask you to remember and honor why they served.
Jane McLean and Kevin Lewis.
Good evening. I'm sorry, are you all ready? Yes. Please state your name for the record when you start and you'll have three minutes each.
Hi, I'm Supriya Ranganath. I'm a junior at Union High School. I ask all of you to take a look around the room. Think about the microphones that are sitting through the chairs you're sitting in. Think about the cars that you used to get here and your phone is constantly in the pocket area. These things that I'm listing are things that all of us use every day. And whether we think about it or not, these are things that start or stem from our school.
Four years ago, I took my first engineering class at Union High School, not knowing all of the details. It was very daunting to be the only girl in class, especially one of the class of three projects and working together. But I persevered into the beloved area of engineering and am the teacher of Mr. Von Hartford. This past year, I had the opportunity to build my own project that I personally designed for the special needs class in Union High School and used to compete in the county's idea challenge. With the help of engineering classes and an exceptional mentor, Mr. Von Hartford, I was able to step up my passion for engineering and do all that I did. If I had not had this opportunity in my freshman year, I would most likely not have headed off to Colorado State High School, a competitive engineering school to set a mechanical engineering school.
I'm Chris Sullivan, an eighth grader at Weston Elementary. They say middle school is a life opportunity. The time to explore and find what inspires you, the time what interests you. They say you can be whatever you want to be. Pertaining to my experience in middle school, they were true. For the past three years, I have provided numerous opportunities for my school. I have had what they call a true middle school experience. I have been part of numerous improvement programs, including two robotics teams, a creative computer science class, road building club, science workshop, and computer shaking. Digital integration facilitators, CTE teachers, classroom teachers, and AI teachers have made this program possible for me. The amazing staff at my school, which is large school and won't make a day, may be one day, say true. But we've also been planning, planning to pay for motors, gears, bolts, and wood, plywood, and computer programs, and other essential supplies that far too often staff will pay for out of their own pocket. With the proposals of staff being cut, we are in serious danger of losing these programs altogether. My younger brother, who is two years planning, may face middle school without the opportunities that I have. If I hadn't had opportunities like these, middle school would not have been such a great experience for me. I would have not been able to find what inspired me to do something. I'm here today because I fear that I and many of my peers won't have the opportunities that Sammy had and after these generations will not have opportunities that I have. As over a thousand students will start at Union High School that Sammy just finished, I wanted to ask myself, how will these systems run our schools, affect the future of our future world? My story is shared by councilors. The budget cuts that Moore County faces pinch and interest me about our future world. As you can see, without the strong STEM programs that are currently in our schools, all of the other students could be deprived of discovering their dreams. This is the generation that will be designing, creating, and thriving in the world we live in today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis is present. Pastor Molly Katz and Dante Paul.
Good evening. I'm Molly Katz, Principal at Aberdeen Primary School.
I'm Dante Paul, the Principal at Aberdeen Elementary.
Good evening and thank you so much for doing the inevitable. You actually visited each one of our schools and we thank you for that. And as far as we know, that's the first. Each one of you did a thorough walkthrough of our facilities. Yes, the Aberdeen schools may appear to be old and may appear to be a massive amount of work for a truth-based life. However, as I told many of you during our visit, we have staff and community that is united in doing whatever it takes for our children. Regardless of the facility, you were able to see teachers growing children and exceeding grade standards for the state. You were also able to see a loving and nurturing environment where every child is met with high expectations on a daily basis. You were even able to see the many state recognitions and awards that we have earned over the past thirty years. Our constant theme and message of the Aberdeen schools is that we are a school family and we are in this together. But just as we are a school family, we are also a part of the Moore County Schools' family. We are all struggling against me. We are all struggling to find a way to do what's best for children with very little. With this being said, you are in the perfect position to not just be our hero, but to be everyone's hero and fully fund our schools.
So these schools in Moore County is connected very intimately with the communities in which they suffer. They have history and a story that goes beyond buildings and grades and test scores. Our schools are at the heart of the things that matter most to us, our children. The recent attention to the Aberdeen schools has provided opportunity for us to tell our story, which is one of strength and resilience in the face of different challenges. Every day, our parents send us the best they have in hopes that we will give the best we have so that together we hope create a bright future for our most valuable resource. As principals, we bear the weight of making hard decisions that are in the best interest of our students, staff, and their families. And we try to do so keeping the preservation of the dignity of those who we serve in mind. We are proud of the ways our parents and other stakeholders are working in partnership with us to make the Aberdeen schools better places to learn. These are pivotal moments for us all as we consider how to express our commitment to our current students and to those who have not yet arrived. Our board and distribution have established a plan that we believe is an expression of their commitment to a bright future for all of the students and their families.
Selfishly, we'd love to just focus on Aberdeen right now. We'd love to go home and think it's easy place. However, the next generation does not hide within the walls of Aberdeen schools. For that reason, we ask you, fully fund our schools, fully fund the next generation, fully fund every Moore County school.
So we appreciate this opportunity to share in this work with you of continuing to make Moore County a great place to live and a great place to live.
Thank you.
Renee Becker, Lou Martin.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, and fellow members of the House of Commons. My name is Renee Becker and I'm a grown half of the best-aided school parent. I'm a mother of two school-aged children, my son Holden and my daughter Lilian. Incredible, forty children, but they're extremely explosive. One of every five students in every classroom has a language-based learning disability. And dyslexia unfortunately is not recognized as a learning disability. It's just a language-based disability. And because it's not a learning disability, they do not receive special education for this. It's up to the hard-working teachers and it's up to the curriculum to meet their needs. And really, the curriculum and hard-working teachers is what meets all children's needs. Which is why I'm here tonight for all the children. We all are, as any parent here and will tell you, we'll spend our last dollar on our children. As a community, we understand that we become obligated to help fund the things that we're asking for and we're ready to accept those obligations. So if my property tax increases in order to provide five million dollars to fully fund our school, I would gladly pay and I'd spend thirty-four cents a day, ten dollars a month, or a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. I want my money to be part of the new buildings that we will watch our kids grow up in. And I want my money to be part of the administrative staff that is answering our phone calls, bandaging strays teen, or fixing our children's drumsticks. I want my money to be part of the beautification and cleanliness of our schools that we are so proud of. And I absolutely want my money to be used for research, develop, and implement the highest-quality curriculum. Curriculum is known to be adaptable and meet our children's learning needs, from struggling to be gifted, with teacher training and education to implement it properly. You all sit in a very powerful position, powerful enough to make an incredible impact on this community. We trust that you will make the right decisions for our children and tonight we are asking you to continue putting our children first. We as a community are ready to accept the obligation to fully fund our schools. We recognize its importance and we are willing to act and we hope that you are too. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, Members of the Board, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am Lou Arno and I teach music at Carthage Elementary and Weston Elementary Schools. I have come before you to address the current issue of funding for our schools, both as a Moore County Schools employee and as a lifelong resident of Moore County. I've always been proud of our schools as both a teacher and an alumnus of Union High School. And I would like to help keep our schools as one of the hallmarks of what makes our county great. I begin by acknowledging that the current budget situation was not caused by the County Commissioners. So I regret that so much negativity has been directed at the Board. Because the state has granted additional flexibility for class sizes next school year, the newest budget update from the School Board does not show any reduction in instructional personnel except through attrition. Unfortunately, there are still many areas that picky cut in the coming year without additional funding. These cuts may not seem significant when looked at as a whole and indeed, there may not be immediate negative results, but that does not mean that there will not be negative impacts. The most obvious impact that our students may see is the morale of their teachers. When a light in the classroom is blinking over a week because there are not enough maintenance personnel to want to come and fix it. When the computer program needed for a particular lesson cannot be installed because IT cannot make it up to the school to enter an administrative password. When copies cannot be made until an email has been sent and approved because copy caps have been set so low because there's not enough funds to buy the copies. Each of these situations are real and happen frequently enough without the proposed cuts to funding. Morale slowly begins to break down as teachers hear of other districts or charter schools with fewer funding concerns. Slowly but surely, we will lose our best teachers this way. At my schools, I teach many students from military families who have chosen to live in Moore County for the quality of our communities and our schools. Just as in Moore County, there are numerous new housing developments in Hope and Hardwood Counties that cater to military personnel but with lower costs. Many of these families choose to spend more to live in Moore County because they know the value of our schools. In the same way, many professionals in the medical field are drawn to work in our hospital because of the quality of our schools. Having such a robust professional group in our county as well as our strong community encourages many senior adults from across the country to retire in Moore County. We're able to maintain a quality of life that rivals most medium to small-sized cities because of these groups. If our schools lose their competitive standing, we will experience a slow decline in this community. I urge you, if you are able to find it in your power, please find a way that our schools can remain competitive. Please fund with the full amount requested by our School Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Buchanan, Lyanna.
Thank you Commissioners for an opportunity to speak. My name is Melissa Buchanan and I live in Cameron with my husband and two sons. Our children attend Union High School and Cameron Elementary. My husband and I have been living in the Triangle for sixteen years, but after we found the benefits of living here outweigh the convenience of living away from surrounding counties. As parents, Moore County Schools is a key factor in this ongoing choice and we are concerned by the funding issues our schools are facing. In a part of our book, the Commissioner remarked that proposed county budget as a good budget. I asked, "Why are we settling for good?" Good is the enemy of great and our students deserve great. I ask for courage and leadership from you regarding this budget and school funding. The General Assembly's current budget proposal continues to show inadequate funding for public education. And despite the years of delay with the class size reductions, there continues to be no funding to support that reduction. While we continue to push for full funding for the state, we must take care of our own now. Local students cannot suffer due to state politics. Our schools have already been forced to cut positions in recent years. Now they risk additional cuts that will affect the education our children receive every day, the very foundation for the future workers and local businesses, future entrepreneurs who will grow our economy, and future health workers who will provide care as we age. It is clear that quality of our schools impacts every person in this county by driving a strong economy, growth in property values, and opportunities for all citizens. My family supports a property tax increase to ensure the schools have the funding they need to be more than good. We support taxes that will ensure there is funding for every current class, staff member in service, and we support taxes to fund additional areas that are vital for a twenty-first century education. We support taxes that protect the arts, technology programs, and other specialized areas as these foster the leadership, innovation, and creativity that drive economic development and the vibrant community. We support taxes that support our schools because great schools are one of the Moore County grades and desirable to families, professionals, and businesses. Even with the tax increase, our property taxes will remain attractive compared to surrounding areas. It's time to prioritize growth opportunities over maintenance of status quo. As public officials, you must make the right choice for our students and we ask that you adopt a great budget, one that fully funds our schools. I want to add, I grew up in rural northeastern North Carolina that is full of poverty. I don't know a single person that I went to high school with who got a college education and went back to Washington County, North Carolina. We all left. We're not there growing up in the county. Please make sure Moore County is a place people want to come back to.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Lyanna Hunt and I'm a third grade teacher at primary or elementary school. I have two of my own children in Moore County School District, one at Weston Elementary and the other at West High Middle School. We moved here from La Island, New York last summer for many reasons, mainly to be closer to family. But the school district in which we purchased a home depended greatly on its reputation within the North Carolina school systems. That's what brought us to Moore County. I have been an elementary teacher for the past seventeen years and have worked for various different systems, including New York City, the New York City Public School District, and now North Carolina Schools. I have seen many public school budget presentations and have worked under budgets that have passed and budgets that have failed and have gone on to a contingency. But financial cuts and loss of jobs and positions is truly devastating and the ones that are impacted the most are the children. Programming, support staff, curriculum needs, textbooks, basic classroom supplies, planning time with colleagues, professional development... planning time with colleagues, professional development, athletic programs, art and music are among the many important needs of the district that we simply cannot do without. Teachers are expected to do more with less. Administrators are expected to run a school with limited human resources. Parents are expecting that their children are getting the best education possible. And kids, the kids are the reason that we are in this profession. Growing to greatness is the motto of Moore County School District. We all know that in order for seeds to grow into beautifully unique flowers, we have to get them soil, air, water, food, and love. The same thing is said for our children. How can our kids grow to greatness if we take away or limit the necessities needed in order for them to truly nurture and grow into amazing individuals? We certainly are running other ways. According to the pilot newspaper a few weeks ago, county communities such as Rappity have shown a population increase of seventy percent over the last six years, doubling the county's population growth, that of which are mostly school-aged families. The growth is steady and relentless. If the county cannot fully fund our schools, then it would make sense for them to propose a tax increase for residents. Yes, it's truly a seven-point realistic when tax rate is so low, but if this problem persists, and we all know it will, we as a community need to do something. Our children simply deserve it. I'm sure I speak for all the people in this room tonight and hope that you will reconsider the budget presented by Dr. Bob Brimson. Fully fund our schools and provide the county's children with the education and schools they deserve. Thank you all.
Elizabeth Elston and Allison Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Allison Johnson and student of Boston. We are from Queens Community Schools. Um, would you the remaining Student Advisory Council members stand? On behalf of Student Advisory Council, we present to you Xavier Arts. Arts are a medium. She is a role model in the song "Through." Arts include, we are not limited to art, band, orchestra, chorus, theater, and ballet. These courses allow us as students to express ourselves, which infuses in school personality and sense of style. The amount of involvement both within the school and the community has powerful effect that are centered in many places that are never been imagined without the arts of grace. And for most of us, arts are only out. As I was growing up through preschool, elementary, and even middle school, I always thought the arts would be there. Whether it was just in your painting or something that you hung in a museum, we always had some sort of art or project going on. I have been singing since I was two, and I don't know what I would do without it. It was always comforting to know that if singing at home was an option, that there would always be an auction at school. I also play several instruments, including the guitar piano and clarinet, and I love playing them so much. My band teacher, Miss Simmons, taught me everything I know about reading sheet music, and I don't know where I would be without her. She has been such a great inspiration in my life, and I couldn't imagine her not being there every day. We also went to two band competitions this year, including one at Harrowings and NBA. We improved by two whole levels from our first competition to last, and we had so much fun. For me, the arts is a way to express myself through something other than words, and it's amazing to connect to other people on a different level. Now, imagine all my experiences that I just talked about never happened. Please fully fund our schools so that the arts are never in danger of being cut. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Stacy Newton and Katie Martin. Hello. Excuse me. Hello. My name is Stacy Newton, and I come here today in two different roles. As a Moore County Schools employee and as a parent of a little girl who will be starting kindergarten in just one short year. This is my fourteenth year working with middle school students, and I love it. I'm a school counselor. I'm going to support students during some of their most difficult years when they are trying to grow up, find themselves, and navigate all of that in middle school. This year alone has been a very stressful time emotionally for many of our students. I have seen numerous students worried about the budget and fearful that the people and the programs they love might cease to exist in the next year or the following year. I've seen students who are dealing with friend issues, family issues, school performance concerns, concerns about gender identity, concerns about parents' employment or having to move again for the ninth time. I've seen students who have reported cutting or suicide aviation because of the stress they are under. I say all of this to illustrate the need for all areas in our school system to be fully funded so that students can feel safe and have the access to everything they need to be productive citizens in the future. Students need so many different individuals to help them on their educational journey. Teachers with manageable class sizes, specials or encore teachers, teacher assistants, principals, assistant principals, counselors, social workers, psychologists, nurses, media specialists, JIPs, SROs, administrative assistants, and custodians. All of these people make a difference in students' lives. As a parent of a future Moore County Schools student, I'm disheartened to see the programs and resources that were available to students fourteen years ago that have been cut and no longer an option for my little girl, such as teacher assistants in multiple grade levels, orchestral, starting in the elementary school. It is so important to invest in our children so they can make this world a better place. And I know that is cliche, but it's the truth. I am willing to support sales and/or property taxes increases in order to bring more revenue into our schools. I implore you to consider all you have heard in the last year and to fully fund our students. Thank you so very much for your time and allowing me to advocate for all Moore County students and future students.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Hirdslawney. I'm a native of Moore County, a teacher at Union High School, and I'm here as two Moore County Schools students, and I currently reside in Orange. As an educator, I understand the vital importance of being a data-driven board decision. Due to this, I would not stand before you tonight giving an emotional charge speech about how our students deserve to be educated in a system that is fully funded. I would simply focus on a few facts and figures. Number one, three cents. By raising that property tax only three cents, the county regenerating three point three million dollars in revenue, essentially closing the deficit gap and fully funding our schools. Moore County has sixty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-two taxable properties. Half of these properties have an estimated value of only eighty-seven thousand dollars or less. Eighty-six, what the three cents property tax represents on eighty-seven thousand dollar property would equal to twenty-six dollars and ten cents per year increase, or two dollars and eighteen cents per month. That's less than a cup of coffee. Though no one likes the idea of having to pay more for something they already own, I truly believe all citizens in Moore County are willing to give up one double coffee a month to ensure the quality of education in Moore County Schools continues. Number two, election year 2018 and 2020. These years are the next opportunity the board constituents will have to vote for people who they believe will best represent their interests in the seats you now occupy. This board's resistance to raising taxes is apparent. For the most part, the taxpayers would agree. However, now your constituents, the actual taxpayers, are asking you to consider raising property taxes literally only pennies because we understand, as my husband always says, you get what you pay for. We understand without any increase in revenue, our county will not continue to grow. Our school system will no longer be the most sought after from among the surrounding counties. Our communities, communities will begin to deteriorate, and property values will decrease, job pockets will decline. Number three, twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety-two. That's how many students are currently enrolled in Moore County Schools. One thousand seven hundred and twenty, that's how many employees Moore County Schools employs currently. Total, that's fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety-two lives that will be directly affected by this crisis budget, or this budget crisis, sorry. That's fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety-two faces and families. This should be your number one figure, your number one data point with deciding about the budget. Tonight, if you are here, you will be directly affected by this budget crisis. Will you please stand? I like the number, the hours, the numbers that are gathered here tonight will continue to stand up for what we believe is best for our students. The question is, will you listen? Thank you.
Jason Coffin, Dino No.
My name is Jason Coffin. I'm with a group called Crow North Smart, and I'm currently a customer of Moore County Schools with two kids attending West By Mill. This spring break at Fort d'Atana Field Garden, a partner to public schools, we saw middle school and high school students mapping and analyzing data and work getting co-authorship on scientific papers in conjunction with PhDs. Our children are facing increasingly competitive global environment where previously acceptable levels of education will not be sufficiently pre-represented for the marketplace. Combine that with the technological advances that increasingly appear in how we disrupt labor skills, but currently alter the number of laborers required. Quality education is becoming a predominant factor in not just determining success, but relevance in the marketplace. Education leaders here in Moore County have advocated ACC being responsive to future demands, and they should be applauded. But if the funding support for K through twelve isn't there, ACC will be for none. If public schools cannot deliver, deliver a level of service that meets the marketplace demands, some of its customers will look elsewhere, while others that stay will face a future of increasingly limited opportunities, problematic consequences that will reverberate long into the future with wide-reaching effects in the community. I consider that the people on the front lines of education in Moore County are very dedicated and capable of doing a great job, but they are increasingly hampered by complex funding mechanisms, unfunded mandates, excessive rules from state and federal policymakers, policymakers that forget that our teachers are degree professionals. While these issues may be on the root of our current funding shortfall, the obligation falls on all of us to push back on these onerous policies. The board, however, has an obligation not to let this burden fall on our children as the board is in a position to alleviate the short-sightedness and allocate funding to meet the necessary level of service. The board also needs to set up a framework to address this in the future. It seems increasingly like our leadership looks like growth, transportation, employment, education, and quality of life is individual silos whereby education is an afterthought, not the foundation. Partners in progress, recent survey illustrates, we know the foundation. Peering fifteen years into the future, respondents wanted Moore County to be known for a strong educational system as an excellent place to raise a family. It's time to treat the level of service our schools provide as a resource similar to water. If the level of service cannot be maintained, growth is put on hold until it's adequately resolved. Otherwise, all long-term stakeholders suffer. The county's land use plan must be updated to incorporate the education level of service. And when growth measures are decided, the impact to the education level of service needs to be accounted for. Growth for growth stakes in Moore County will not fix our problem, it only exacerbates it. Smart growth with holistic planning that values the education level of service and honored, honored to the funding is a pathway to a high quality of life here in Moore County.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Well, a resident of Pinehurst. I want to thank you for taking my callings tonight, also for meeting all of us here, also for being a member of the community this last night. I know that this takes time away from your nails, so I would express my gratitude. I would like to use all of the general services taken here at the office. I have a soft opinion this last, so thank you for doing this. I'm really pleased with it. Unless if you're aware...
Could you speak a little bit more generally?
Yes, sir. While you're actually talking about that, I'm aware. Unless you're...
Yes.
Thank you. Unless you're aware of this, this is one of those on social media, I think among some of the people here that connects work, who said that maybe last night's cancellation was premeditated. Okay, so I personally do not believe this. I'm going to choose to believe that all of you are taking your positions because you want certain... I believe you want to take the position, you're taking the position because you want to improve it, because you're making a better for the next generation. And I'm going to continue to believe that until you prove you're wrong. I was born and raised in Oklahoma. There's, the reason I bring that up is because there was a featured article series in the Washington Post last week. I'm not sure if you saw it. If you did, it featured the Oklahoma school system. Oklahoma is near the bottom of teacher pay. They're near the bottom of people's ventures. They've had fourteen percent reduction in spending for people since 2008. A lot of that is the result of their refusal to increase property costs, property taxes. To offset these costs, Oklahoma started to increase its elementary school class sizes. They started cutting programs, started charging for extracurricular activities, charging the students for extracurricular activities. Twenty percent of the Oklahoma schools are now holding four-day work weeks. If students only attend school four days a week, they aren't paying for transportation and other costly payments. If we want to see where our schools are going, we only need to look at Oklahoma because we are almost knocking back with that. There's a report that was published, uh, February twenty seventeen. Our teacher pay is almost identical to theirs. The amount of money that we pay per pupil is almost identical to theirs. And I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but states that pay more for their students include Alabama, Arkansas, Louisiana, Kentucky. Even West Virginia pays more than we do. Fifty percent more per student. I mean, no offense to, to any former state, but Oklahoma, right? North Carolina right now pays three hundred and fifty percent more to house an inmate than we pay per student per year. Three hundred and fifty percent more. And two-thirds of them will come back in three years. Two-thirds. Right now, we're looking at cutting medical, nursing. We pay as much right now for a student to go to school as we pay for that inmate to take medical services. That's the total expenditures for the students. It doesn't make sense to cut medical. It doesn't make sense to cut PE when we have an increasingly overweight society. It doesn't make sense to cut language, foreign language, when we have an increasingly interconnected world. It doesn't make sense to cut culture, arts, when we have a multicultural society. I'm willing to bet that most of you have PE. Most of you have art. Most of you have foreign language in your schools. It doesn't make sense to have the next generation not have those kinds of activities. I know that you guys have some very tough decisions that you have to make, and I totally respect you for those. But I'm hoping that you'll make the morally right decision because this isn't just about my daughter who goes to Pinehurst Elementary. Their kids, it's about the next generation. It's about our entire community. And I hope you'll make the morally right decision. I hope you make one that'll make the next generation better off. I hope that you won't just meet the school's needs. I hope that you will exceed what they're asking for, find a way to make this better than what they're asking for. They're asking for their own, not to mine.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
A D A P, R and P.
Here. County Commissioners, Madam Commissioner, and citizens of Moore County. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Isaiah King, and I'm an eighth-grade student at West Pine Middle School. And I'm excited that I'm soon to be a freshman at Congress High School. I love you all. I'm one of the many and major classes of students with severe and chronic health conditions who attend Moore County Schools. I'm here this evening to thank you for your continued financial support on behalf of the school nurse program of Moore County. Uh, on behalf of these students with health problems, I ask that you not only keep all of the nurses that we have, but also hire more nurses. We have over twenty schools and our building even more. We need a school nurse at each school every day. I can only tell you that it is so important to us that we're able to attend school and that we'll be safe and cared for by a nurse every day when we have either a serious emergency or crisis situation. I shared with the Board of Education in the past, but I want you to, to also hear my story of how important it was for me back in November that Ms. Spock was not at another school but was there to help me. If it was not for Ms. Spock's nursing skills, quick actions, and kindness that day, I don't know what my outcome would have been. I ended up in the ER here and was transported to the UNC Hospital later that evening. I think I threw it six times. Sorry. Not only did she help me through that emergency situation, but when I got out of the hospital, she helped re-educate my teachers on following every step of my helping, because they didn't have a nursery school, that's my school. I can actually recall all of the nurses that I paid during my home years ago in Pinehurst School. Nurse Marcia, Nurse Louis, and Nurse Ellen. All of these nurses were very smart, they knew just what to do, and they were always kind. I also know that they were very pretty, too. But thankfully, there are others like me who, because of medical problems, are not able to participate in sports like everyone else. So it's also important that we keep bands, we have a teacher this time, and other arts in school so that students can have both the important academic success and the opportunities for school-related extracurricular success as well. In closing, we need the financial support to keep these little nurses in our schools, and even to hire more good nurses like the Radby Hall. We, our future county commissioners and community leaders, please support these nurses so that they can provide the care needed for students with accidents and injuries, and for those of us with lifelong medical conditions. We deserve that kind of care last school. I take this vital opportunity to thank all of my teachers, nurses, and principals. Some have nothing, hi all of us at the state, I respect all of you. I checked up the information ahead of time about the school nurse at Congress, and Ms. W, I hear that you're really brave. And next to your body, nurse, I know yours. County Commissioners, we are really, oh, we are all really counting on you to fully fund our schools. Thank you, and God bless. I'll be going.
I think I should take some time to follow you, get in on it. Good evening, Madam Chair, we're officials, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Karen Kent, I'm from Pinehurst. I do lots of grandparents for more, so you've probably seen my name as pronounced. As I provide broader historical perspective on the Moore County Schools' funding, so much damage has been done by state cuts, I'll say it again, state cuts, since 2008. But despite local increases and the use of ten million dollars in Moore County Schools' savings, massive cuts have still been made. Do you remember that since 2008, costs have increased seven million dollars for employee benefits, four million dollars for teacher raises, who's familiar? Three point seven million dollars for more students, plus another million dollars for charter school students, which are not in the planning area. So I'm going to go through this with cuts, and I'll do it quickly, because it's really long and I'll get through this. The programs that have been cut since 2008 include year-round schedule, Spanish immersion, international vocalori, elementary orchestra, and smaller class sizes in grades four through twelve. Material cuts have included classroom supplies, office supplies, custodial supplies, textbooks, and kindergarten reading books. Facility cuts have included the closing of academy heights, twenty buses have been parked and routes lengthened drastically. Also maintenance funds to each school and accounting and general have been cut. But the largest cut of all has been physicians. We have lost thirty-six teachers, plus six stem teachers, one hundred and thirty-three teaching assistants, eight custodians, one specialist each from Human Resources, finance and purchasing and communications, two from curriculum. We've lost the director for career and technical education, for curriculum, for operations, and for grants. We've lost the deputy superintendent, the curriculum superintendent, volunteer coordinator, and central data manager. We've lost support staff, one from central office tech, one career and tech ed, one central office receptionist, three from instructional support, which is reading intervention and coaching, two administration assistants from central office, one counselor, two assistant principals, two maintenance techs, and twenty bus drivers. And this year, in addition, we stand to lose two more assistant principals, two more instructional coaches, eight media techs, one, I forget my name. One remaining director of curriculum instruction, two more maintenance techs, one school resource officer, two and a half receptionists, nine more custodians, two more central office administrative assistants, one high school athletic trainer, more money for school supplies, more money for maintenance projects, teacher training and development programs, teacher curriculum workshop, digital content money, ID our twentieth century textbook performance, expanding computers to third and fifth grade, and staff at the Go With That, as well as nighttime emergency maintenance response for all of our schools. This list is astounding. Please do not allow the denigration of our schools. We accept more. And we are all here to revise it with a political incursion to use our money to fully fund the Moore County Schools' seventeen, eighteen budget request from the state law.
Thank you.
Tom Gold, Lucinda D.
Good evening, my name is Samantha Devlin. I've been a school psychologist with Moore County Schools for a total of twenty years. Today, I would like to speak about the Department of Student Services, and since this is a budget hearing, wealth and poverty. Student services includes school counselors, school nurses, school resource officers, school social workers, and school psychologists. I'll just give you a few details about my field, school psychology. We have a foundation and knowledge bases for both psychology and education. We are training, testing, counseling, consultation, collaboration, and database decision-making. Our services include working with others to deliver quality instruction, intervention, and support for academic skills, for mental health and social skills. We work with others to promote learning, to provide preventive and responsive services, and to work for families to cooperate. We are highly trained in learning, mental health, and the three-tiered model of support required by state law. We are experts in positive behavior intervention and support, student support teams, critical incident intervention, and special education. And we do testing. Our national association recommends a student to school psychologist ratio of no more than seven hundred to one. Historically, our ratio in Moore County has been twelve hundred to one. With eleven school psychologists, we were barely able to keep up with the testing, and also offer consultation on the danger of student support, mental health, volunteer systems of support, genetic brain injury, critical incidents, and special education. This year, we lost a physician, one that Karen didn't know about, probably. Because of the budget crisis, our eleven school psychology physicians was frozen. As it stands now, we will have to get out of time psychologists next year, which will bring our ratio to fifteen hundred. We will now be doing only testing. Now that we talk to you about poverty, although Moore County is among the twenty wealthiest counties in the state, twenty-four percent of our children live in poverty. That means over three thousand students in our schools come to school with much higher needs than their middle-income counterparts. They have a higher rate of health, learning, behavioral, and emotional needs. Three hundred seventy-five are homeless. These students need nurses, psychologists, counselors, social workers, and police. All of our students need us, not just those in poverty. They need school psychologists at seven hundred to one, school counselors at two hundred fifty to one, and school social workers at four hundred to one. They need nurses and police. Failure to fund student support services is a short-term solution with dire and long-term consequences. Moore County has wealth, and needs to invest it in the academic, physical, and emotional health of our students. Thank you.
Scott Chukweli, Ethan Jones.
Mr. Jones, uh- Hello, my name is Ethan Jones, and I'm a rising ninth grader.
Mr. Jones, could you speak into the mic, please?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Ethan Jones, and I'm a rising ninth grader, going from Cray Street Middle School to Union Pine High School. I am here today to speak on behalf of the arts, and I will tell my story of the arts and other students' stories as well. I started playing music when I was in the sixth grade, after I saw the middle school group play at the Yellow, Yellow River School in fifth grade. I played trumpet and had an amazing teacher, consistent. Halfway through the year, I switched to the French horn, which I play now. I loved it, and I still do. In my seventh grade year, I founded up the Moore County Band, which is a group you try out for all the student, middle school students and high school students to try out for, to get, play inside of this band of the best musicians in Moore County. I tried out for this group and made second chair horn, though our first school's music sparked a deep playing desire for music in me. The group sounded amazing, and I realized with enough practice, I could be even better than them. And it was already really good. My band director recommended that I start taking private lessons, so I did. I was pretty poor at the beginning when I started lessons, but after a few, you could hear a vast difference in my playing. My teacher started with a whole district's trial, which is all the counties in the district. Without her, I never would have made the re, made third chair as a seventh grader. This concert was even better than the county concert, and start another playing. I just wanted to be better and better than the largest challenge of all, all-state honors band. I prepared to try out for that, making second chair. Out of all the middle school reform players in the state, I made second chair. The scale was too large to not be counted, and the concert was even better than the last two concerts. The band started, Dan, Cliff, and Castle. The high school group sparked five more flames inside of me, they were that good. And my band director was so involved in the arts. She was willing to drive me from Stanford all the way to UNC Chapelville and UNC Greensboro. She encouraged me all the way to success. And I realized if it weren't for my interest in trying something new, I never would have made these groups. Then, while I was eighth grader, I joined a community orchestra called the Mooreville Brahmana Orchestra. It was so fun to be in the student club, and most of us, lots of them, are actually high schoolers who are in the arts programs as well. I earned a scholarship, still to DC Summer Band Camp, although I made personal county this year, personal district, and third in all-state bands. I had a point away from second chair and two points away from first chair. By now, I probably had and have still ten-plus points inside of me that I'm in music and arts. You can ask any of the teachers of the concerts at one of the concerts, and they will say that saying that they enjoyed it is a understatement. None of this would have happened if I ran the arts program. My life would be bran, and other people's lives would be bran, and have no meaning to the arts. I have nothing to strive for or achieve, but the arts are enough. Now we're being threatened. If they're stolen, it would take this, that people would miss out on only using memories, that the attention of the arts, and the students would be unable to play much less child for these groups. The band directors who come on these trips would be able to catch up on more and they'd use it, and they can't do that if they don't have jobs. The days would be as hard without our arts directors, you know? Don't take the arts away, please fully fund Moore County Schools and all the arts programs. Thank you for your time.
Ethan, stand there for me, because we don't write early in.
Tara Harton, Carrie Suthers.
In two thousand and nine, my cousin and I had an, had a, had a run at our house, and we were facing a decision of where to move. Our oldest son was turning five, so schools were to full-front of our decision-making process. The answer was easy, though. We knew we had to go to Moore County, where the schools were no further greatest. The school system at the time was flourishing. Now, we have another child in Moore County Schools. Our oldest is in the gifted program at Cray Street Middle School, and our older son is in the exceptional child program at Bassett Family Church. Moore County Schools have continuously put our children's unique needs first. As a military family, we have been fortunate to have a school system that will blow the arm the way Moore County Schools have. Over the years, though, we have witnessed cuts in state funding each year. A few TAs here, robust schedules there, teacher supplies here. When does it stop? How does it stop? We're running out of things to cut. It stops with you, the county commissioners. Your mission is to provide exceptional services that make Moore County a premier community in which to live, work, and raise a family. By fully funding our schools, you have the power to take us back to the flourishing school system that drew us here in two thousand and nine. Show them more county school students you care. After all, these are your future doctors, CEOs, and who knows, future county commissioners. Thank you.
David, I am a very, very senior citizen. Some of you people out there don't realize that in the part of thirty years we reach my age. My wife and I moved here from northern Wisconsin, live all over the country. I have no children, no grandchildren, nor great-grandchildren in Moore County. I have nobody in school here. My wife and I are great believers in education. We live here, we've been here twenty years. Schools are fine, but when I see what's happening to real estate taxes here as opposed to the rest of the country where I've lived, it's absurd. It's insane. We moved here from northern Wisconsin, middle of the, that's all. Twenty years ago, our property value up there was about the same as what we bought down here. Our taxes up there were four times greater than they were here then, and it's the same thing applies now. Wisconsin ranks in the top five states in the nation for education. I realize a lot of that's state-funded, but the local sales tax, property taxes, sorry, that we pay up there was acceptable, everybody accepted, because they run these schools. So I can tell you that I live, unfortunately, I live in Pinehurst, it's an affluent community. I've talked to a lot of my neighbors who also have done well, and we said, why not? Why cannot we afford an additional real estate tax to fund these schools that are so neat? It doesn't cost that much, and I think with what we have in Moore County, it's a very reasonable thing to ask, and please consider it, and you'll have our vote. Thank you.
Michael Mantil, Naomi Anderson.
My name is Michael Mantil, and I've lived in Pinehurst and head primary care physician and primary medical clinic for the last twelve years. And I'm here tonight to ask you to fully fund our schools. And I'm here tonight to ask you to fully fund our schools. I have a vested interest in the quality of our schools, and it's not just because I have kids in them. One of my main responsibilities at the clinic is to help recruit and retain new physicians. Given the increasing population of the area and the number of doctors reaching retirement age, we're trying our best to keep up with demand. As a physician in a one-host school community, often we cannot offer the most lucrative upfront financial packages to potential recruits, and we face very stiff competition, both regionally and statewide. To make up for that, we installed a virtue of Mor County. Our many recreational opportunities, a first-class medical infrastructure, a low-cost living, and superb public education. Those qualities convinced me to move here twelve years ago. Unfortunately, since then, my family and I have experienced continual cuts to our schools. Many of my colleagues are upset and exploring other options for their children's education, and honestly, we are too. To highlight how this hurts our ability to recruit and retain doctors, I'll share an example. Our newest doctor moved here from Colorado when we were in half of there, in part because her practice was becoming unaffordable in the suburbs of Denver. Her daughter was enrolled in public schools in Colorado, so the family did not hesitate to enroll her in the fourth grade in Mor County schools. Unfortunately, that engagement with Mor County schools lasted all of four months. When I asked what happened, she stated, "Oh, God, it was terrible. There were more kids in that classroom than I could count, and my daughter didn't even have a own desk to sit at." Amongst other examples, a poor-eyed public school now paid thousands of dollars per year to attend the private school. Since this doctor is approaching year two of her commitment to our clinic and community, she must decide whether to leave now with no financial penalty, or choose to buy into our clinic and stick with our community long-term. For her and her family, this decision has become increasingly difficult because of factoring, factoring the costs of her daughter's tuition over the next eight years, and realizing that because of this, the cost of living here is not as low as I initially thought. I should imagine my job of recruiting and retaining physicians is a lot more difficult if we can no longer use a public schools as a selling point, and the community will suffer because of it. So please, do me a favor. Help me help our medical community and the patients we serve, and help thousands of families in Mor County by making this a more vibrant, competitive, and affordable place to live. If you don't have the money in the current county budget to fully fund our schools, then please raise my taxes, do whatever it takes, because the failure to do so will cost all of us a heck of a lot more. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Naomi Armstrong, and I have two students enrolled in Mor County schools. A sound financially-supported school system is the foundation of every healthy and thriving community. The failing state budget is not new news to you. Mor County's education funding has been insufficient since two thousand and eight. I've had the hardest time trying to comprehend why our education funding has died on the backburner for the last nine years, despite the growing budget deficit and the increasing outreach for the community. To be frank, I think the county and the state aren't experiencing the day-to-day hardships or enduring the advantages and disadvantages caused by these incessant budget cuts. I worry that you, the county commissioners, will continue to be slow to act until the impact of these budget cuts starts to impact you more directly. Unfortunately, that may not occur until the fallout from the funding shortages fully degrades the school system and begins to damage our community. I don't believe any of that's great, not significant, long-term, negative rough questions that eventually plague the community when the schools are chronically underfunded. I think by now, you're acutely aware of the profound correlation between the quality of education, the local economy, and the primaries within a community. You know that fully-funded schools serve the best interests of the future and safety of a community. So how is it that no one is implementing as our circumstances school funding? I've had some brief correspondence with the state senator, our representatives, and the board of education on the proposed budget cuts. In over the past four years, I've sat through plenty of these county commissioner meetings, and listened, as the community has been pleading for improved school funding. In response from all entities involved, all I've heard is excuses, the shifting of blame. I've heard some valid excuses, but I've also heard some ridiculous excuses. And either way, over these past four years, this board of commissioners has stuck to the same thing: We can't. Our hands are tied. And both counties across the United States manage to make their education system a priority to provide proper funding. Fixing our county budget to fund our schools fully is not impossible. I'm tired of the excuses. I'm tired of hearing you declare that you can't. It's as if you're so wrapped up in defending your position of helplessness that you're self-looking for the solution. It's time to shift your focus away from what you think you cannot do. Start looking at what you can. This community is not interested in hearing justifications for the lack of funding. Don't tell us you can't fully fund Mor County schools. Don't tell us about the hurdles that stand in your way. Don't tell us you've tied your plans. Tell us how you will untie them. Share with us the strategies that you have developed to fix the budget, to jump over the hurdles. Explain to us how you plan to implement changes that will facilitate proper funding appropriations that will lead to a fully-funded school system. Tell us how we can support you. Tell us how you will. Tell us how you can, because the future of this community depends on it. Thank you.
Yes, quick, please. Chris Tompkins. Chris Tompkins, Andrew, Amy Heel.
Hey, good evening, all. Thanks for having me. I've been a privileged former North Caroler, and been a part of North Carolina for the last sixteen years, and been coming to county commissioner meetings to do these kind of talks the last thirteen years. I will say that I agree with all of you that this year is different. I think people really do want action. As I told you, the many times that I've come to address all the residents of this current board, members of this current board, this is not your fault. I get it, I really do get that this is the state's responsibility to fund the schools, and I also get that the state's not doing it. I further understand that as we've taken the time to say, to listen to the state's promises, that they're going to show up with the money that they have, it's not fair that we have to come to you to ask you to raise the county's sales tax because the state is not providing what they ought to. But that's what, that's our ask. I think it's a crystal-clear ask, and that's what we're looking for, and I think it's very important. I think it's also to think about what our taxes, taxes are really the expression of what we value as a community. And when we went to, we went to a fantastic exhibit once, a museum in Washington, DC. It was World War Two, and comment on the day action reminded it. It was, it was a movie that they showed before movie theaters, before movies, and they showed that, basically, yes, I can let her go off to it. They showed that, uh, budget cuts. They, the ADHD is infectious after a certain amount. And what they did is they asked people to mail their taxes in early, and they showed tax on the lips coming to Washington, DC, and turning into bullets, and guns, and bombs, and tanks, and soldiers' uniforms. And the point was, pay your taxes to defeat the axes. And that's when we have to decide, decide what kind of community we want. I think all of us can agree that our national politics is somewhat broken. I think state politics are perhaps a little broken as well, but I don't think our local politics are broken yet. And you're getting a very clear request from the community to fully fund our schools. My objection to the current budget as proposed by the state, by the schools, is that I don't think they're asking for enough. I think we need to reverse the cuts that Karen presented. I think the comments by the woman who spoke so passionately about the poor and the priorities in Mor County fits exactly with my experience. As a pediatrician, I take care of lots of poor children every single day, and those families do amazing things for their children. I have been left absolutely a god, their families who tell me that, well, the reason I'm a guest change is because I decided to stay home with the kids, so we sold our house and we're moving into a trailer. Families will do the right thing for their children, and we want to prioritize those children first, not last. You do wonderful things with the county for the school budget, and you get a tremendous share of the pie, but it's basically time for the pie to get larger, so please, pay the bills, fully fund our schools, let's be a great community, and make these taxes our expression of what we really value. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can I speak to the ladies? Ms. Gill, three, please. Dorby Brower and Alinda Watkins.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now, Dorby Brower, I'm a proponent of Mor County schools, West Southern Plains High School, which is now Southern Plains Primary School. And since I grew back home in my retirement, I've had the opportunity to see firsthand what happens at Southern Plains Primary and Southern Plains Elementary. There's an ancient African proverb that states it takes a village to raise a child. However, I believe it takes more than one village. There are several villages that educate a child. You are one of those villages. For many of our Mor County children, and those that I see firsthand, schools are their safety net, from the principal's office to the disco room. The social and cultural outlet for them and their families. They are the place where they can talk about their dreams and not be afraid, a place where they get their most balanced meals. We owe our children the best for them to compete locally and globally. Those who are high achievers will have fewer obstacles in succeeding in life. They often live for education and careers, and they never return to Mor County to live. However, those children who will not have such options often remain in Mor County communities. We want them to succeed in life as well. Let's make sure they make up a trainable workforce and contribute to the growth of this county. I realize that this deficit did not happen just in the past year or two, and in some cases, there may have been administrators or boards that lowballed budgets in the past, not knowing that we were living in a tight, in the situation we're in, not to mention the situation with the state and federal government, not knowing where they share the weight. Mor County US Commissioners are obligated to provide a free, quality education for children, a clean, state-of-the-art, safe environment for them, the staff, and all who enter the campuses. Whether it is from increased taxes, which I'm in favor of, I have no children, no grandchildren, but all the children in Mor County schools are mine. Whether it's from your funds or funds from state and federal coffers, let's make it happen. If you must lobby from Washington, I'm not, I'm sorry, lobby from Raleigh to Washington, DC, you would certainly have my support, and there are many more individuals. Just enough to get by and make do are no longer acceptable. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alinda Watkins, I'm president of Mor County, N O A C P, a lifetime resident and a learner from Mor County, and also, I am a Moore Monday Arrestee. On Monday, June fifth, for the fourth time in the past week, the highest court in the land has drawn racial motions and has passed in the actions of the District's leadership of the North Carolina General Assembly, their mass. The court unanimously affirmed the August twenty-sixth, the August twenty-sixteen US District Court decision, which detailed the conscious racial jury-mandant tactics of the District's leadership. The highness citizens of Mor County are not the future for the county, the young people in the schools are. What these students learn, what they are taught, the county education they receive, will all go long ways in determining our county's future. The continuing injuries to the African-American community and our friends who have fought for our whole lives to eliminate racial discrimination and bold practices of North Carolina demand tough, well-crafted remedies. The N O A C P has demanded constitutional districts for essential election. We won't leave from the flood of paid bills, including the solation budget of our public schools, passed by the illegal Constitutional General Assembly. We welcome you to join the war, the long war fusion struggle for well-funded schools. And the next time that you hear about a Moore Monday, a Moore Tuesday, a Moore Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, I ask you to join me and others to protect, to talk to our legislators and possibility due civil disobedience. Thank you.
Thank you. There are nine speakers remaining, and next to our Elizabeth and Janet Smither. Are they coming? Okay, that's it. Virginia Jones, Asher Chikone.
Good evening, Madam Commissioner, I'm sorry, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much for holding this public hearing. My name is Virginia Jones. My husband and I moved from California to Southern Plains almost two years ago. One of the reasons that we decided to retire in North Carolina was to get away from the burdensome taxes that we experienced in Southern California. However, in the time that we have been here, we've come to realize that you really do get what you pay for. We do not have any children here at our school age, and, but we have spoken and we have heard from the people in our community that do. And it appears that not yet, our getting what you pay for is very evident in our school systems here. And so those concerns, because we are very dedicated to public education, have become our concerns. I've been told that there's a hesitancy to increase property taxes because the county has so many retired folks on fixed income bills and people that would be considered low-income residents. However, I do recall a recent pilot editorial in which the numbers showed that the people who are at the so-called top of the box in terms of home value would have a tax bill increase of less than five dollars a year if the property tax rate was increased by one cent. So a penny increase would, according to this article, increase our county revenue by one point one million dollars. A two-cent increase would just about cover the deficit for funding the district's proposed budget. So I say, think what a five-cent increase would do. And I know that some people would moan and groan and think that that's far-fetched, but it really isn't, because as we keep kicking this can down the road, it's going to come back every year. And I don't think we'd want to be in the same situation, going through sixty-something people coming up and saying the same things next year, and a year after that, and a year after that. I really think we need to start addressing it now. We're going to have to bite the bullet, let's just do it. Because meanwhile, our kids and our schools continue to suffer. The children of Mor County deserve more, and our community deserves more, too. Our schools must be fully funded. Give these precious gifts the opportunities and tools to be first-class citizens of the world. The future they face will be so different from ours. Their competition is going to be global. Why on earth would we ever want to hold them back? I am one of those old retired people on fixed income, and I don't enjoy paying taxes any more than anyone else does, but I understand the necessity. I know that I want to live in a community that has well-educated children, that treats its educators with the respect that they deserve by paying them a competitive and decent salary. I want our county to be a desirable place to live, where our schools have stellar reputations, our parks and our green spaces are well-maintained, and our streets are safe. If we don't do this, we will become yet another dilapidated and forgotten corner of the South. I don't want to be told that we can't afford to raise taxes now. The reality is, we can't afford not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Jacobson here? John McInerney? Mary Chi? MacKenzie? Are you Mr. McInerney? Sorry.
MacInerney?
MacInerney.
People are barking up in the woods.
Maybe that's why you didn't come when I called you.
No. I had the weed because... Anyways, I am John McInerney, live in Southern Plains, have since 1972. Once upon a time, I was on the Southern Plains Town Council with Frank Whis, don't hold that against him. I'm going to go down into the weeds a little bit, briefly. Talking about revenue-neutral tax rate, because a few years ago, commissioners, some of them are maybe on now, maybe not, didn't do it appropriately. In simple terms, if you have a $10 million valuation and it goes up to $20 million valuation in revaluation, then you can cut the tax rate in half and you're bringing the same amount of money. For the same token, if you have a $10 million valuation and it goes down to $5 million valuation, which wouldn't work, you would have to double the tax rate. It's fairly simple concept. Unfortunately, several years ago, on the last revaluation, the commissioners then did not deal with a revenue-neutral tax rate. They kept it 46.5, which is what it is now. I don't remember, it's the best, I'm sure you know the number, for revenue-neutral tax rate, I think it was 48 or something. If the commissioners then had done that, we probably wouldn't necessarily even have to be here tonight, because more revenues would have come in. For the life of me, I can't understand why the commissioners did that. It's not as if they don't know and didn't know at the time that the schools were in bad shape. We have seventy-year-old schools. They knew that. They knew, what, we need a new courthouse? Has it been safe in our county for seven years or you better come up with a new courthouse? And yet, they didn't deal with a revenue-neutral tax rate. When I was on the council, I was in favor of it, so I dropped dead, I'll be in favor with no sense in not raising revenue. Now, if you've got a county where all your schools are ten-years-old or newer and all your facilities are fine, that's one thing. But if you know you have money issues, then you need to raise the money and not be short-sighted. And I hope whenever the next revaluation comes around, that revenue-neutral, at the very least, is done. And certainly at this point, at the very least, at a minimum, whatever that revenue-neutral from a few years ago. See, if we had that a few years ago, we'd need more money now. So I really don't understand the short-sightedness of people sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Renee Baker and Angela Decker.
Feel a lot of pressure today, the thing, we're like, you know, well put together, considering how late everyone is staying. Sorry for this point. Thank you so much for allowing us all to stay late and to speak. My husband and I have been residents of Moore County for over ten years now. I'm a company owner, because of that, we have planned to stay here forever, but recently have been questioning that decision and the impact it will have on our children. We have a child who attended San Jose Farm Life from kindergarten through fifth and we have children there now. And while San Jose Farm Life was an amazing school with outstanding, dedicated staff, I've seen things change over the years since we've been here. While shortages in the budget cuts that have taken place over the years are not the county's fault, we know that. We citizens of Moore County are asking you to use our money to fix the problem that the state is not. One of the commissioners spoke last night about how they are hour-represented, trying to work the best they can to do the right thing for all of us and that they cannot please everyone, and I could not agree more. But I think it's crystal clear with the display tonight that Moore County has voiced where we want our money to go. And we do have the money for this and for this budget. We have nearly $20 million surplus the last time I checked into it. And if this isn't a worthy cause for that money, I don't know what is. Fully funding our schools is necessary to make sure our children have the education they deserve. So many cuts along the years and increased crowding have made it increasingly difficult for our children to get the education that they deserve. And it simply cannot be done with further cuts or without new school additions or leaves overcrowding. I was part of a small group of San Jose Farm Life parents who went to our last superintendent over four years ago with concerns of this overcrowding that was beginning to take place and the huge issues that we saw looming with all the building that was taking place. We knew then, and then the school board did as well, that the overcrowding was a critical issue that had to be dealt with. That was over four years ago, it is even more critical now. If two schools need to be built at the same time, then so be it. But please not waste any more time deciding if it is immediately necessary. I have personally known dozens of families that have moved to homeschooling, private schools, or charter schools, or have left the area altogether as this overcrowding and budget cuts have taken place. We ask that we fully fund all currently needed budget items and appropriate needed items for new schools that were brought to you last night by the school board to keep our community strong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Counting Commissioners, my name is Angela Bosick. And I yield back my time to the floor.
Madam Chair, that concludes Melissa's public speaker.
Um, thank you everybody that stayed and we'll conclude it here, so thanks to all the speakers. So at this time, I'll pause the public hearing and I'll ask if we have any comments on our manager or any commissioner. Mr. Manager? Mr. Graydon? Mr. Quinns?
I want to thank everyone for coming as well and appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Let's go ahead and comment.
Mr. Deick? Now I have my. Our last motion to adjourn, our June 6th meeting in North Carolina. Mr. Deick, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn. I'm going to say, we have to go.